Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is November 14th, so part of our agendas are up there if anyone wanted a copy. So we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as a star.
This is all over?
Yeah. Just to note, our chair, Al, is not sitting on this, so I'm going to be the acting chair. Paul is going to be the vice, and Alan is going to be our clerk. That's what I just assigned, so. So part of our agenda is acceptance of minutes. We just received the minutes in the packet today. I don't know if you guys want a chance to review them before you vote on them, or...
Can we table the minutes so I'll have a chance to read them?
Absolutely.
Well, I'll make a motion to table the minutes because I just got them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're going to go with some continued public hearings that are going to be requested to go into December 12th. Just a reminder, you guys, we're actually in our meeting, if you could just be quiet a little bit, thank you. So the first on the agenda would be Dale Street, which they requested a continuance till December 12th. And it's in the packet here, so all those in favor, continue this to December 12th?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to continue.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we're going to do, I should put my glasses on, 5:30, Foxford Street is also going to be continued to December 12th.
I'll make a motion to continue that till December 12th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? I didn't hear, I only heard one aye.
Aye.
Right. I feel like I'm in school. Okay, we have a public hearing that they request to continue December 12th, so we're going to open it and then continue it. So Alan, can you please read this? I told you I'd keep you things that you need to read.
You're testing my ability here. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, November 14, 2017, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Hera Development Corporation. Party aggrieved for property at 1503 Osgood Street, map 034, parcel 7, North Andover, Mass. In this CDD3 zoning district pursuant to Mass. Journal laws, see Fodia, Section 8. This is an appeal of the building inspector's determination that a self-storage facility is not in allowed use in the CDD3 district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning board located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday from 8:00 to 5:00, Thursday, and Friday from 8:00 to 11:00, Thursday. For Art of the Board of Appeals, Al M.P. Manzi III, Esquire Chairman.
Okay, is Attorney Caffrey here? I wasn't sure if he was here or not. Okay, they requested a continuance as well to December 12th.
Motion to continue to December 12th, Madam Chair.
Aye, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to go on with our continued public hearing, which is going to be 122 Foster Street. We actually have it right there, so is that okay if you guys up there?
Yeah, yeah, I put it down.
Okay, so before you present this, just to let you know, our process is for you to submit to our zoning assistant, for you to make, not our assistant, to make copies within a timely manner, because it was my understanding that these did not get to her in a timely manner, that they would get to us in a proper time. So Valerie was gracious enough to copy them and send them to us. So in the future, if you do have any more that needs to be submitted to the Board, it is your responsibility to make the copies, to give it to the Board through Valerie, and then to us within the timely manner, so we can get that. Okay?
I think probably before we start, Madam Chair, I've got a similar complaint about procedure, which is that when we had our first hearing a month ago or so, we talked about site visit. Madam Chair, she sat right there, I sat right here, the other Board members, all of us were present when she asked for the flagged, we wanted the footprint, excuse me, of the supporting equipment, buildings, structures, whatever they were, to be flagged. I showed up for the site visit, like everybody else who gave up a piece of their Saturday. I showed up, it wasn't flagged. That is an appalling level of either incompetence, inattention, disrespect, I mean, you name it. I was unbelievably offended. I need to do it again. I need to take another Saturday out of my life, so I can walk this property to see something that Madam Chair asked for, and that was assented to. That should be expected in the first place. So I don't need an apology, I'm just verbally, you may not even be feeling an apology, which is totally fine with me. All I want is for, when something is requested, if the bylaws request that copies be made, if the rules and regs request that copies be made, that they be made. If Madam Chair or any other member of this Board requests something, if it's something that you can deliver, and you agree to deliver it, I expect it to be delivered. I do not take myself seriously. You will not find a bigger buffoon in this town than yours truly. But what I do take seriously is the time and attention that I give to this Board, these applicants, these residents, this community. I don't expect a red carpet. My president seems to think that a red carpet is some kind of an extraordinary gesture by heads of state. I suggest it's table stakes. Every head of state that visits another gets the red carpet rolled out. I don't want a red carpet. All I want is for, when you say you're going to do something, do it. I say it to my kids, I say it to you, I say to any other applicant who may be listening at home, if the Board requests something, deliver, and deliver timely, or you're just not going to get what you need from me. So Madam Chair, that's, I'll get off, I'll get off my soapbox, I apologize for taking so much time.
Duly noted. Continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just again, for the record, Brian Grossman, Anderson and Krieger, on behalf of the applicant, Varsity Wireless, with me is...
Chris Sweniarowski, attorney for Verizon Wireless.
We do have some other members of our project team, and as they speak, we'll have them reintroduce themselves as well. So in terms of new information, Madam Chair, I know you were at the planning board hearing as observer, but certainly not part of the record of this proceedings. So just to recap where we are, some of the questions that both the planning board and this Board have shared has to do, have to do with height of the facility, and whether or not it could be reduced to try and minimize, or further minimize, the overall visual impact of the facility, as we presented to the planning board, and are presenting again tonight to you. Based on the minimum height analysis that was confirmed by the planning board consultant, Mr. David Maxon of Isotrop, the minimum height is, for Verizon Wireless, is 97 feet. Our radio frequency analysis is that the other anticipated tenant, AT&amp;T, has the same minimum height. Both cannot locate at the same minimum height, so one needs to be above. And so in terms of design, what we've done is, if there's a trade-off, as we talked about last time, in terms of additional height helps to increase the likelihood that down the road, colocation will be a viable option for additional carriers, and that's why we proposed the original height we did. But we understand there's a, there is a trade-off, and one of the places where there's some room for judgment is height, especially when you're talking about the additional height necessary for colocation beyond the two carriers that are currently providing information. And so with that said, Varsity, if conditioned, would agree to construct at 115 feet rather than the 135 feet as originally proposed. That 115 feet is very similar in terms of design to the 135 feet, so it's 110 feet to the top of the actual tower structure, and then the faux branches that you give the extra taper extend that additional five feet. That would put AT&amp;T at 107 feet, and then with the required vertical separation, Verizon down at 97 feet. In terms of other changes to the design of the facility, there are no changes to the compound or equipment. There was some addition, as shown on the plans...
If you find there's no changes, if you're having three carriers instead of five, you still need 4,000 square feet of compound?
They'll still have the compound to accommodate that in the event that another carrier does seek to locate, if one or two of those lower heights do work, you want to make sure you have that compound space available and don't have to come back and expand that compound. It does have an impact on the overall view shed. We'll walk through some of that, I won't go through all of it like we did last time. But one of the things that was provided in the updated package is just a tracking log of the company that did the view shed analysis, so they confine themselves to the radius shown on the circle, and then you can see in blue all the roads that they traveled looking for and tracking the location of the balloon, looking back toward the site, and then of course, the photo log of the sites themselves, including locations in red where the balloon was not visible, the few photos in yellow where it was visible but obstructed, and then in green where there was unobstructed views. So what we submitted is the package, we previously submitted the photo simulations at 135 feet, we submitted the photo simulations at 115 feet, but we thought it was helpful to show them side by side and show the overall impact in terms of minimization. And as you can see, at 11 Bridges Lane, it's somewhat visible on the left, and then minimally visible on the right, it pokes just above the vegetation there, and that's actually just the part of the topper there, that extra camouflage height in terms of overall visibility. Let me try to minimize this a little bit, if I can. So let me do... There we go, okay. Now everything's visible on one thing. Again, from 46 to 100 Foster Street, you can see it visible above the tree line on the left, when you reduce it down to 115 feet, it again is minimally visible, just right above the tree line blends in fairly well. This was the much discussed view between the planning board and Varsity, and this Board and Varsity, the view from the ball field. Again, in terms of the overall reduction, again, as we maintain, it's not going to be invisible from every location, but the overall reduction in height has a significant value in terms of bringing it much closer to the tree line. It still exceeds the tree line, but in terms of the amount of visible height above the tree line, and it brings it much closer to the natural overall tree line. And at 115 feet, based on the site assessment survey we have for the tree line overall in the area, it's, the maximum tree canopy is about 105, 106 feet, and the average kind of max, the average of the upper canopy is in that 86 to 106-foot range. So this helps bring it down significantly closer to the overall tree line. Again, this is the view from 98 Huckleberry Lane, and again, you can see in terms of overall height, again, the significant reduction, and actually, if you look kind of off to the right, or it's my right, where you see the tree line just above the chimney there, it's actually even with or actually below that tree line to the right, so helps blend it in again fairly well. This is the view from 32 Blue Ridge Road, again, when you look at it from the distance, first of all, overall, it's extremely minimal impact, but again, it brings it much closer to the tree line and really blends it into the background. In case anyone had questions about the compound, this is still the same compound as being proposed originally.
Can you go back to the compound, please?
Sure.
So now, my question is, your requesting a front setback, is it to the pole or to the compound, which is, is that considered a structure?
The, well, the compound itself is not a, is not a structure, and the equipment cabinets would not be, would not be a structure. The setback is for the...
To the pole?
Is to the pole, and that's how the bylaw terms it. The other thing it does is reduce now the height down to 115 feet, so that setback to the overall reduces those that require the multiple, it reduces the overall relief needed, but it also means that in terms of distance to the property line now, instead of being at 135 feet, that number is still the same, but the tower itself is now only 115 feet. And to the front, it's still, it's still 172 feet.
Is that your interpretation, that that's not a structure?
The equipment cabinets are not structures.
They're not structures?
No.
Okay.
Transformers generally not considered a structured equipment cabinet or HVAC.
Is it on a cement slab?
It is.
It is?
It is.
Okay.
One of the other questions that came up, and I touched on briefly in the initial part of the presentation, had to do with overall height and the minimum height analysis. We ran that again for both AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless. Just to walk through, so the three or four different colors there that are not green, the gray, the blue, the yellow, and the red, are all new coverage from the proposed facility. So it shows just the additional coverage, not some of the overlap that would extend into areas that do have some coverage already. Based on the analysis, and confirmed by Mr. Maxon, 97 feet is the minimum for Verizon Wireless. At the lower heights, it doesn't provide the coverage to some of the surrounding neighborhoods and homes that are part of the overall coverage objective. Again, there is some loss there when you go from the, from the overall 135-foot height down to 115-foot, knocking Verizon down to 97, but it's a, it's a trade-off Verizon would be willing to live with below that. It doesn't work for Verizon, would not achieve their objective.
Can I just ask a quick question? Does this include the coverage of the Boxford Tower, too?
I'm sorry?
Does this include the coverage of the Boxford Tower?
No. Actually, I'm sorry, it does. It does, off to the right.
That's already installed?
Off to the right. It is not installed, but it's included as part of the predicted design.
Is that green?
That's green.
Okay.
So that's that bottom right pinwheel, it says Boxford, 117 feet. We did the same, similar analysis for AT&amp;T as well. Again, you can see the various colors, again, the determination by the radio frequency engineers is that 97 feet would be the minimum for AT&amp;T, but you need that separation, they can't be located at the same horizontal plane on the tower, and so the way to do that is to go up. So they would get the next highest and last available, last available spot in terms of going up, and that would be at 107 feet. There would still be a colocation spot available at 87 feet, whether a future carrier could utilize that spot or not, would be up to that carrier, you know, when they, when they identify this as an area of need and work it into their network design at that time. Is that clear? You look like you have a question?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to move on if you did.
I'm not shy, you know I'd ask one if I did.
No, it looked like you were formulating one, so...
I know you don't have a carrier for that 87-foot slot.
Right.
Is that, is it an effective slot at that height? You know, as far as today's technology goes, I mean, I hear you loud and clear that there is that available slot for, you know, colocation slot, but with current technology, is there a carrier that could actually find utility at that height?
It would depend on where their network is when they, when they do it. I mean, it does provide some propagation, and when you look at the analysis from Verizon and AT&amp;T, and everyone in North Andover is generally in the same locations because of how development's gone, it will provide some coverage, it won't be ideal, but it will be up to that carrier to make that decision at that point. You know, their network may have matured or changed, their subscriber patterns may be, may be different. It may be sufficient, but right now, we have two carriers that have said 97 is the lowest. But again, that's the judgment call. We proposed higher, and the question was, could you go lower? And the two potential tenants have said yes, and we were willing to do that. If this Board, or, well, this Board needing to grant the height variances, thought the better trade-off is to be, you know, instead of 115, 125, Varsity would do that to increase the likelihood of, you know, additional colocation. But this was the minimum height that would work for the two anticipated tenants, and so we thought appropriate to propose that. We can always talk about going up, certainly not from our original application, but from where we are today. But in terms of the questions we were asked and where things were headed in terms of analysis, we thought the 115-foot made sense to propose as a compromise. As you said, the, Mr. Maxon confirmed as to the Verizon analysis, the 97-foot height, and that the, you know, colocation on new towers encourages that additional height, and that's what we've talked about in terms of that trade-off, you know, higher than that 10-foot canopy criteria that the bylaw imposes. And so Mr. Maxon has also, in that sense, confirmed that the, in order to provide adequate coverage, the variances requested, the height variance requested is necessary. Something that came up at the planning board hearing, and so it makes sense to address here, as I know you were there and heard the questions, has to do with small cells. And I will ask Martin Lavine, who's the radio frequency engineer from C Squared, who's here tonight to assist in talking about this a little bit, but those questions were raised, we want to answer them. They were raised at the planning board hearing, so we haven't had this, this part of the discussion with them yet, because we'll have it next time when we're there. But the planning, the planning board consultant, Mr. Maxon, even confirmed in the original analysis of the application, based on the RF data that was provided in the initial application, both the planning board and this Board, that the, those types of small cell nodes serve very small areas, generally focused right around the pole to which they're attached. They combine overall coverage, and I think we talked about this at the last hearing, they add capacity, but they really don't add coverage in terms of infill. And so when you have this kind of broad geographic area like we do here, it's not, the strategic use of small cells doesn't work in terms of providing that overall coverage. It will provide the capacity, and where that, this type of design and type of complementary usage will work. Verizon has done it, they've done it here. We've, those locations are shown on the coverage plots we've provided. But in terms of providing the overall breadth of coverage necessary in a large geographic area where you have roads that are lined with trees that are taller than the existing utility poles, that blocks the coverage and won't provide coverage, you know, off the, off of the road, it won't provide the coverage, the in-building coverage into homes. Even Mr. Maxon concluded, and again, this is from his report, not ours, that there's just not a practical way to simply add more nodes to the utility poles to provide the macro level of coverage. One of the other issues that we've talked about here is they do have a very limited coverage footprint, they're very easily blocked by things like trees, where you have, you know, topographical feature that it doesn't need to be that tall anymore, if you're really talking a 30, 35-foot utility pole, will block it, they're used for capacity. They're a very different type of installation than a macro site, they have no backup power, so...
Can you explain to this Board the difference between capacity and coverage? Because I think you did a nice job at the planning as well.
Sure.
So I think this Board would benefit from that explanation as well.
Sure. Actually, I'm going to use the planning board member's example, because I thought it was better than mine.
Okay.
Which was, you know, when you go to Patriots game, or the Bruins game, and you look at your phone, and you have five bars, and you then try, that's coverage. You're inside the coverage footprint, your phone is registering that it is receiving an adequate signal strength. But when you take that picture of kickoff, and you go to try and upload it, and you can't upload it because you can't actually access the network itself, that's capacity, meaning that there are too many users on the network in order, that prevent you from actually accessing the coverage you have. There's too many calls trying to go through, or there's too much data being accessed. The older school example I used is the old Ticketmaster example, you know, when I was in high school, when tickets went on sale for something popular, you know, you would pick up the phone, you'd have a dial tone, and that's in the sense, that's the same thing as looking at your phone and seeing the five bars, that's coverage. But when you dialed, and you tried to get through to Ticketmaster, and you got that recording that said, "I'm sorry, all circuits are busy now," that's the capacity issue. You can physically dial out, or in this case, you can physically try and make that connection to the network, but the network doesn't have the capacity to give you the resources you need to complete your phone call, or complete your upload or stream your data. Does that help?
I appreciate it, and I kind of get it, and I really, I want to get it better, frankly. When, if you're, if something is providing capacity, then, again, I'm not a scientist in any way, so I know that you are absolutely swimming upstream when you're trying to explain this to me. If you're, if the node is offering capacity, then it seems to me by definition, and again, this is where I'm faulty, so I'm not challenging you, I'm trying to understand, if it's offering capacity, that means it's reaching somebody, which means it's offering coverage, you know, to me. So where am I tripping in that assumption?
No, you're mostly right. There is some, there is coverage, or there is radio frequency being, and some coverage being propagated by the small cell. In that instance, though, it's such, it's a very limited footprint, so like in downtown Boston, there are, you know, small cell nodes that are providing coverage literally to a street corner. Or in this case, in very, in the Verizon, you know, C-RAN network, in very limited instances, it's providing it really in that small ribbon of coverage, you know, covering particular streets where there may be, you know, traffic or whatever issues, but it's covering it literally in that, was it at best, third of a mile area?
Well, at best is a quarter of a mile, unobstructed, completely flat, which we don't have, so it, I mean, you're not tripping in the sense that it does provide coverage in that spot, too, but when you think about what you're trying to do, which is use the least amount of facilities to cover the largest area, it's a wholly ineffective way to do that. You have these little installations that can cover little hotspots essentially of intense use. They're not really effective to cover a large area, because you're going to have so many of these little installations. It sort of becomes the exact opposite of what every bylaw wants, and really, what everybody wants. I mean, ideally, we would all want to have excellent wireless service and have it be invisible and not have any facilities. In all of these hearings that we do all over the country, the goal is to strike the happy medium and get to the middle. In this particular instance, and in many towns like North Andover where it's not urban, small cells don't work. Small cells are an urban thing for high density. We did, I personally did, I think, maybe 50 of them here, two summers ago or last summer, and they're all on your busiest streets, so they hit those spots where we saw a lot of demand and some failures of capacity on the network. So we had coverage there, but too many people were trying to use the coverage. Another example I always use is like the Wi-Fi router in your house, covers your whole house, no problem, four people in your family using it, no problem, have 20 of your friends over, everyone tries to use it, it doesn't work. It's a bandwidth issue, really, plain and simple. Those alleviate it, and we put those in these strategic little hotspots, intersections, you know, sporting arenas, things like that, where there's just a very intense... you know, sporting arenas, things like that, where there's just a very intense, compact use. But it really is not effective to get a large area of coverage. It's more visually intrusive to try to do it that way than to do it with a single installation like a tower or what we call a macro facility.
Again, you talked about they have no backup power to them, so unlike the facility, the macro facility, if the node, if the power to the node goes down, or the small cell, then there's no coverage being provided as well. So if you try and, you know, you try and create that larger footprint, first of all, it's impractical, but second of all, you know, it doesn't have the additional capacity in terms of backup power to provide coverage at times when it may be needed most.
Do these small cells feed into the towers?
Essentially, yes. I mean, they provide relief for the tower. So yes, they do feed in. We call it offloading. So to use the example again of the Wi-Fi router, so let's say the tower is your router and there's 20 people trying to use it, and not all those people can use it because it doesn't have the capacity to provide the service for all 20. So if there is one of these small cells in the area where some of those 20 people are, those 20 people will go to the small cell, and the small cell transmits back into the network. It doesn't connect directly to a tower. It's not a satellite off of the tower. It's almost like a mini tower essentially that connects back into the network.
So this, and this is another part of the mystery. It's not necessarily important. It's just, it might help me click a little bit. So the small cell, I'm driving down Main Street. I dial the phone. It goes to a small cell on top of a telephone pole physically. Where does the signal go from there, from the top of that telephone pole, the small cell, to where?
Going to a switching hub here would be one that's in Lawrence. Yeah, it's traveling at the... No, via fiber. Via fiber optic cable.
No cable.
Yeah. So the network, there's a backhaul and a backbone to the network, and that's fiber optic cable. And that you, as you're traveling, it's able to hand off from one to the next as well. So in your car, you're, you know, you're having a data session, if you will, which is maybe uploading a video, downloading, whatever it is you're doing. And, you know, you'll be on one tower, which is transmitting that information back into the network via the fiber optic cables. About 90% of what we do is fiber optic. There's still some older-fashioned places. And that goes to a central switch that handles the information, sort of, I like to call it, makes a decision, if you will, with the digital data, digital data, and transmit, transmits it to the other receiver on the other end. So when, in your example, when you're driving down the road and you make the call, if you are picked up by the small cell, it's not going to the tower. It's going back into the network, and the network traffic, if you will, is handled at that central switch.
And if we're driving by a tower, are we connecting with that tower and is it doing the same thing? Is that tower connected fiber optically to the network?
It is. It is. And so the difference is the tower is reaching a lot more people who are driving. And if it's reaching 300 people in their car, who are all trying to do this, but it can only handle 200, 100 of them aren't making any connection at all. So we have a pretty good way of monitoring where these spots are, where the people are not getting a good connection. They might get something, but it's not nearly as good as we can provide. And that's where we try to target these small cells and put them, and that's where we put a lot of them in North Andover in the last year or so.
And we're just talking here. You said 300. Is that a rule of thumb for a tower? Or is that just a...
Just for example. I mean, there are so many variables involved in that, and it's not a number, because it's really a function of what's going on on the device. You know, there's the signal strength. There's obstructions via terrain, trees, buildings. So no, 300 at all is not a number, just illustrating, using the example.
How substantial a, and we talked about obstruction. We're talking about the small cells, you know, spitballing, I think, here with a little bit of science behind it, is a quarter mile unobstructed. But it sounds like it doesn't take a lot to obstruct the small cell.
It doesn't take much at all. It's a different type of antenna. It's an omnidirectional antenna, whereas if you notice on the, on the towers, we always have three sectors, each sort of cover 120 degrees. These small cells are a single antenna covering the full 360 degrees. It's not as strong. It's not designed to be as strong. It's, again, it's designed to just pick up that little small point. So that, because it's not as strong, it's more susceptible to obstruction.
And it's also more susceptible to obstruction particularly located closer up. Like when you have the trees that are lining the street and you have the utility pole right there, that tree much closer does much more in terms of attenuation and obstructing the signal. Again, my favorite example, one of the, one of our construction guys gave me was, pull the pen out here. I can mostly see, but I can't really see around it. If I pull it right here and close my eye, you can barely, barely see it. It's very similar in terms of working with RF and the obstruction particularly provided by trees or buildings.
So a tree is as much of an obstruction, am I saying this right? A tree can be, depending on its location, as obstructive, that's not the right word, can be as significant an obstruction as a structure.
Yes, or a hill or whatever. Right.
Well, yeah, because it is solid wood at some point. So it's just a matter of, though, like Brian was saying, how close it is. If it's really far away, it's, yeah, it's the same obstruction, but it's just a thin version of it. But with the small cells, because of where they're located on utility pole, there are a lot more obstructions. You know, there are buildings typically right near them, and as Brian was saying, there's a lot of tree cover. Most of the poles in North Andover were under 50 feet, if I remember. We had a lot of them that were in the 30s. We were installing some stuff around 40 feet. So if you think of trees, most trees are taller than that. You know, our tallest trees in most of Massachusetts, though, cap out at around 100. We don't have a lot of tree species that grow much taller than that. We have some here and there, but your tree canopy is sort of around 100 feet in Massachusetts in most places. So when you put something around 100 or over, you're getting over that tree canopy for the most part. You can have some obstructions here and there, but you're getting over it. You put something down low at 50, you're blocked by it, and really, all you're serving is what is between you and the trees. And that's what the small cells are all about. They're hitting the sidewalks, the main streets. They're not shooting through the trees and trying to get coverage in the next neighborhood over. That's not what the technology's about.
But also further to the analysis, we actually reviewed whether or not there's any sort of existing infrastructure to even attach to. So certainly, you know, along some of the main roads, like Foster Street or Boxford Street, where there, you know, some nodes are ready and a couple that haven't been constructed yet. The vast majority of the area that's trying to be covered in the red does not show up particularly well on this. So, you know, all of Bridges Lane, all of Vestway, I'll try and move the cursor around. The Stone Cleve and the roads, you know, down in this area here, all of the neighborhoods over here, none of those have existing telephone poles. So the infrastructure would need to be installed. You know, new utility poles would need to be planted wherever they need to be planted to provide the overall coverage footprint. And that would be a significant number, and it would be, you know, they wouldn't be 20 feet. They would need to be, you know, somewhere between 40 to 60 feet to provide that, the coverage that's necessary. So there would be an impractical number at this point, given the fact that there would have to be trenching involved to provide the fiber backbone. You'd have to install utility poles where neighborhoods, you know, were created for the precise reason to not have utility infrastructure above ground. It's already in ground. And it wouldn't provide the same level of coverage or service because you'd be limited, you know, to those, to those roads, as opposed to the broad coverage footprint provided by the facility that does provide some coverage to, you know, the outdoor trails, some coverage to the athletic fields, and some, you know, other, other locations that wouldn't necessarily be reached by the small cells. So in terms of trying to replicate or replace the coverage being provided by the macro site, our analysis is that it really can't be done, and Mr. Maxson agreed. I don't remember, I think this came up at this hearing. I know it came up at the planning board, and certainly relevant to the discussion. One of the questions, again, was whether or not the existing utility stanchions, that power line run closer to the Boxford line on Foster Street could be utilized. Those stanchions are about 55 or 60 feet. They're not the, you know, super tall 120-foot metal structures. So we modeled it with an extension of about five feet to get to a 60-foot pole off of Foster Street. And it provides a very small coverage footprint. It doesn't provide coverage to, you know, most of Foster Street that's trying to be covered, any of Boxford Street, the neighborhoods to the southeast in terms of coverage footprint. Again, those are the same neighborhoods we were just talking about that don't have any sort of existing infrastructure, utility poles, where any sort of supplemental facility could be located. And again, this analysis was submitted to Mr. Maxson, and that the supplied coverage analysis demonstrates that the poles are not tall enough to provide the degree of coverage necessary to address the area that Verizon and AT&amp;T seek to provide coverage.
Can you just tell us who Mr. Maxson is?
Oh, sure. I thought I did. So David Maxson is from Isotope. He is the planning board's independent consultant. Planning boards retained him. Varsity can pay for it, but he is independent and working for the board. Or, well, he's independent, but he's retained by the board. This map is actually, this, this again came up at the planning board hearing, but I think it's overall helpful to understand in part. I know Mr. Keller gave a discussion of how we arrived at the site at 122 Foster Street. This looks a little bit to the northeast, but one of the questions had to do with, when you look at the topographic map that was provided with the radio frequency analysis. See, this is... This?
Yes.
No, I did this today, but I'll give you a copy of this entire presentation.
So what you're presenting, we don't have in front of us?
No, this came up after we, this was, after we would have submitted the package, because this is in response to a question, well, this came, this was in response to a question raised by someone at the planning board meeting.
Just to let you know, what you, I thought this was in our packet and what you're presenting. So we, as a board, actually do our homework. I spend countless hours with town council, with other members of the town. So when I come here, I'm informed and I can ask and review this and have all the information that I need. So by you presenting this detailed of a, of a packet, which has nothing to do with this that you gave us, is one of my pet peeves.
Well, the information, the presentation includes the information from there. This was a question that came up after this was submitted. I know it's going to come up tonight.
The planning board or from us?
From, from, in a butter at the planning board that raised this as an issue.
This is not the planning board. This is the zoning board.
I understand that, except I know that this is going to come up tonight and is going to be asked tonight, so I can wait to present it.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And what you're presenting, we had, we don't have in front of us. Again, this is a totally different process. This is the zoning board. Our process is extremely different than the planning board. I will, and actually, I'm going to go through it before the members of the audience, the difference between the planning board and the zoning board. What we're here for and what you're there with them for is a complete different process.
But I'm not presenting different information. I'm...
We're asking you different questions. That question did not come up before our board, so you presenting that to us is not fair to this board.
Then I'll wait till the butter who's here raises it, and I'll address it then.
Us as a board. I mean, a different process. We're looking at variances. They're looking at a special permit. Totally different. So at that, I'm going to open it up to the audience for them to speak, so...
Well, I still have information that we did present here that I want to present.
Is it in the packet?
Yes.
So you're going to present this to us, not something that we haven't seen yet or something that the planning board has asked?
I'm going to ask Mr. Carente, who did the report that I have quoted here, that was provided to this board, to discuss the issue of diminution in property value.
Of what?
Diminution in property value.
Did we ask that? I don't think we did. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the audience, so... Right now, your presentation is done. Thank you. Unless the board has anything that's presented to them, not that was presented to the planning board. Any questions? No?
No.
Okay. So what, before I bring up anyone, I'm sorry, I don't know who you asked, sir.
I'm addressing Attorney General Caffrey Jr.
In regards to...
I represent Lanny Finbury and Ken Lindauer, who are direct butters to this property.
So before we go and I open it up to the members, the neighbors and the members that are here, I just want to let you guys know that this is for a variance. So according to our bylaw, which I printed out and I made...
For a series of variances, to be clear.
Yes. Oh, I didn't do it well. So the variance in appeals is actually section 10.4 is, I mean, it's in our bylaw. So you're here for the zoning board of appeals. You'll have power upon appeal to grant variance from the terms of the zoning by, I really, zoning bylaw. I really don't want to read it to you because you can read it, but it says it's the intent and purpose of the bylaw, and the purposes of the bylaw are in section one that you can all look at. So this is a different process. You are at the planning board for a special permit. You're here with the variance. Yes, they are similar, and the information that you present to them will be presented to us as well upon our asking you, upon the audience asking you questions. I understand that you wanted to get ahead and say, "Well, you might ask that," but presenting to this board something that you don't give to us is unacceptable to me. It's one of my pet peeves. So I want to open it up to the audience. Go ahead.
The national grid information was already in your packet.
Correct, but half of that was not. So again, we are a volunteer board. We take time out of our days, out of our families, out of our lives to come here and do this, in the goodness of our heart. And by bringing us something like that is, again, unacceptable to me. I don't know how else my board feels.
We're trying to be proactive. Understood.
My view, Madam Chair, is that it's constructive for the applicant to bring any and all materials.
Absolutely.
What is, what is unfortunately in some ways destructive is that I haven't had a chance to take a look at it before the meeting commenced. So I'm kind of, end up being surprised by some new material, which is not necessarily a bad thing. It's just hard, as a board member, it's just challenging to manage the stuff that was requested, that was presented in the first meeting, stuff that's requested in the first meeting, and then revised, you know, appropriately by you and your team. Then to bring in, bring in new stuff is just a little bit, not enough capacity, you know, to borrow a term from the year.
You said it a lot nicer than I did.
I'm a nicer guy.
Yeah. Your first one wasn't as nice as mine, but that's okay. Go ahead. So just for the record, because it's hard to hear a little bit, just please state your name and your address for the record clearly, so Valerie can hear it, so when she does take minutes, she can get a clear record of that, please.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Andrew Caffrey Jr. I'm an attorney at One Elm Square, Andover, Mass. And I'm here tonight representing Elaine Finbury and Ken Lindauer, who are direct butters to this project. I know they are here with their particular concerns, and there are a number of neighbors who have concerns. I want to bring this board's attention. I would like to focus really just on the legal ramifications. I did not have the benefit of being at the first presentation. I have had a chance to look at a number of the materials, but I wonder whether there was any presentation made regarding what the hardship is that justifies the variances that are being requested. As this board knows, to justify a variance, you have to find a hardship with the land. And I suspect that there was nothing, because there's really nothing they can point to as a hardship. They have selected this site. They're not a homeowner who can't build a house because of a large rock outcropping or something like that. They've just picked this site because they think it's the best site. And they're asking to impose on the neighborhood their request for a commercial development to generate income for them. I'm curious, in terms of this poll, they've said there are two current carriers and there may be future carriers. I'm wondering whether, what other carriers might use it, for what other purposes, and whether there are any other benefits that this tower would bring to the developer. I don't, they've talked about the local neighborhood. I don't know if there's been any talk about complaints from the local neighborhood about lack of coverage or inadequacy of coverage. They seem to be coming in as the white knights to, you know, improve the cell service in the neighborhood, but I don't know that there has been any complaint about that. So again, the, I think the big thing or the toughest thing for this board is to justify variances based on there not being a hardship. In looking at some of the materials, I know that this is, you know, one of the exhibits, and I think it was shown earlier, and I think there's a new one that shows the towers being somewhat shorter than this, but this is clearly a huge visual detraction from the public land that's nearby. I noticed there was a statement... I noticed there was a statement from Stephen Keller, Director of Development, that was part of this, and his conclusion is, based on his personal knowledge of the site and the surrounding area, "There are no viable alternative candidates located within the search ring that would be considered superior to the proposed site." So that phrase that would be superior, to me, indicates there may be other sites that are not the best. This must be the best site. I know that they mentioned the study done by Isotrop, and he raised the question about a site that's about a half mile east, and I think they referenced that and they made some testimony that they did not think that site would be viable. But I don't know whether that is one of the sites that might be usable, but it's just not superior to this current site. As you know from the plan that was submitted, and I apologize for the size of this and my back and stuff, you know, this is a huge piece of land that the owner has, and they're locating it up in the corner here. My clients are immediately next door to it, and, you know, there's just no need for it to be jammed up against the corner, so that they need all these variances from setback and from the fall zone and from the height and everything else. So I think while it may be a, we all like having good cell coverage, and it may be a good proposal in terms of providing that, I think it's an awful burden to put on this neighborhood to stick this tower in that location, particularly considering the rural nature and the farmland that this has been and how it's been kept over the years. So with that, I'll end my comments, but I know the, as I say, the neighbors have questions and concerns that they would like to present to the board.
Thank you. Did you want to comment on each one, or did you want to have all the neighbors comment first and then do a summary? Because I think some of them are going to overlap.
It's probably best to go one by one. I'll try and do it quickly, particularly with this. So one, I think it would have been helpful if Mr. Caffrey had been here before and perhaps read the application that was filed, that was voluminous, that goes through in great detail each of the criteria required for the variance and how the facility meets it. We, the presentation that was submitted last time from the original hearing is at the back end of this, does go through that criteria, including, all the criteria, including hardship. One of the things I know this board knows is one of the, you know, overlays beyond just MGL 40A, Section 10, has to do with the Telecommunications Act as well, in the fact that, you know, despite nitpicking a word in Mr. Keller's analysis, this is the only feasible site that Varsity has identified. There is no other facility, location that Varsity has identified that would both meet the coverage objective as well as also be available for lease. And we've gone through that. Mr. Keller provided the spreadsheet of all the parcels that he cataloged that made sense to catalog. A lot of the ones that are in this area, you know, would be automatically excluded, like the small, single-family residential lots on, you know, in some of the subdivisions. Obviously, we wouldn't, it wouldn't really have gone too far in investigation as to whether or not those, you know, those would be suitable for a wireless facility, and it's pretty clear they're not. So the location is necessary to provide coverage to a significant gap in coverage. You have the RF report that was provided with the original application that goes through not only traffic counts but population data that will, that will be served by the homes, or served by the facility. We have some additional data that there are at least, you know, additional 517 homes, you know, in areas that don't have the type of infrastructure necessary to even support a small cell type of installation. And in terms of, you know, hardship as well, specific to the coloring, as we talked about last time, the facility is proposed to be camouflaged as a tree. The bylaw says it has to be painted light gray or blue above the, above the tree line. And if this were a traditional style monopole, we wouldn't ask for a variance from it, but it's not. We've chosen to try and camouflage it as a, as a monopole, and to do that, it needs to be brown and green, otherwise it won't, won't blend in, it'll actually stand out even more. So, you know, from that standpoint, we've addressed the hardship criteria both in writing and previously, you know, in terms of the, again, if he'd been present at the last hearing, to know why it's set in the corner that it is. We've talked about it topographically, it's one of the higher locations on that particular property. As you move towards the middle in the rear, it drops precipitously by 30 to 40 feet. That would require, as we talked about last time, and I think Mr. Maxson even confirmed, would require a taller tower to account for that drop in height relative to the surrounding area and tree line. And that would actually increase the amount of relief needed, both from a setback standpoint, because it's again, it's a multiple, but also increase the amount of relief needed above the tree line. As you get even further back to the property where it does start to rise up, again, it's wetlands and flood zone. And so that's why the development, most of the development on the property, the development on the property is to the front. It's why this facility is located where it is in terms of, in order to achieve the coverage objective, try to minimize overall height necessary and, as I said, meet the objective. In terms of what other, you know, what other carriers might use it, co-location will be made available to other wireless communications carriers or users. If they have a need and the facility would meet that need, subject to them obtaining the appropriate relief, they would be able to utilize it.
So do you have to get another special permit if you put another carrier on?
It will depend, based on both the, how the installation is proposed, what, whether it meets certain criteria under federal law to, as to whether or not it will be, would be permitted by right, or whether it would require additional relief.
And that would be the, the Planning Board.
Unless there were, unless there was something that required new variance relief, then yes, it would most likely be just a special permit.
I think I'm going to have everyone speak first and then you can address the issues, because I think all, because they've been here for, you know, here to discuss.
If I may, Madam Chair, just before we move on. Well, I agree entirely that Attorney Caffrey certainly could have been here last time. He wasn't the, you know, the, the, I'm sorry, I didn't catch them, Woodbury and Lindauer, I think. You know, they didn't realize they had a problem, you know, so he couldn't be present at the last meeting. But in all fairness too, I think the point still stands, however, that North Andover, NACAM shows these things over and over and over again, so I'm sure it could have been found, or it could have been downloaded, or something along those lines. So I don't disagree with the point. But what I'm, what I am going to need, for the sake of myself, perhaps some of the other members, perhaps some of the people in the gallery, is to, let's, let's review hardship. I appreciate that it's in here somewhere. I appreciate that we may have spoken about it at the last meeting, and it's my expectation that we would be speaking about it again in the future. It's not, not an item that'll go away. So it's probably best to take something like that head-on rather than us collectively saying, you know, it's in the docs. So could we talk about, perhaps there's something in the Telecommunications Act that overrides, you know, hardship in local variance proceedings?
Sure. So in addition to the criteria that I went through, the, as I think the board knows, but I'll try and do briefly for those who may not, the Telecommunications Act has, is kind of an old federal overlay over the general bylaw that the town has and the State Zoning Act under, under 40A. One of the provisions of the Telecommunications Act is a bylaw can't, or a town can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. Personal wireless services are what, you know, the, the phone call, the internet access, you know, through your, through your, through your iPhone. So what's that mean? What it means in a very general context is a bylaw that says you can't put a wireless communications facility anywhere in town. That generally is going to be a blanket ban, probably violates the Telecommunications Act. Not what we have. Andover has a bylaw, we've applied under it, so we don't have a blanket ban, but there are restrictions in terms of location and height and setbacks, and we've asked for variances from some of those. We're seeking a special permit for the general use for the wireless communications facility. But what it also means is that certain restrictions must, if enforcing those restrictions or setbacks or height requirements would result in an effect, what they call an effective prohibition, then those requirements must yield in the face of federal law. And so if a bylaw were to allow facilities anywhere in town, but allow them to be 25 feet, no higher, that might be a restriction that in theory allows wireless communications, but really doesn't, and therefore, you know, variances would need to be permitted to avoid a violation of federal law. There's one other point with that, which is there are cases that say the board, when considering the relief in connection with the wireless communications facility, needs to interpret the bylaw and state law to avoid an effective prohibition of personal wireless services. And so they should be cognizant of the Telecommunications Act in that where a board fails to take that into consideration, whether or not its action or denial would result in an effective prohibition. It fails in its duty to base its decision on another standard under the Telecommunications Act, which is to, any denial must be based on a, based on substantial evidence in a written record. And the board's failure to consider whether or not, in this case, a site like this is the only site from which the facility, the coverage could be provided to a significant gap in coverage, if the board doesn't consider that in its decision, then it also violates the Telecommunications Act. Does that help?
So, I, I think so. There's, there's an awful lot of meat in there. I appreciate you running, running that down, where I'm, I just want to connect some, connect the dot then to hardship. If, it, a crass way of interpreting what you just said is, we don't have to show hardship, basically, we don't have to show hardship if it creates an effective prohibition on wireless services.
Correct.
Okay. I'm unsettled, I get it. Look, I, I get it, there are powers that are higher than, than, than myself here, and I think that the Telecommunications Act is certainly one of those things that's unsettling to me, because I'm just a local guy and a local board, and we do, we do hardship, as Mr. Caffrey knows, we do hardship every, with every application. So getting kind of, kind of crassly waved out of hardship is, you know, a challenge for me, personally.
As far as hardship goes, one of the, it says that the need to close the significant gap in coverage is another unique circumstance that justifies the grant of the variance.
And significant gap, as I'm understanding things, is kind of a term of art.
Correct.
And we have a determination, there's some, there's, I've heard it before, I'm sure it's in, in here somewhere, I just can't find the Princess and the Pea kind of thing. Somebody has said, I'm certain in your application that there is a significant gap.
Yes.
And we, as far as I know, there's nothing in, that's been presented to us that challenges a determination of there being a significant gap.
Correct.
You haven't, you haven't heard or seen anything like that.
I haven't seen or heard anything, and...
No, and even the Isotrop report from Mr. Maxson confirms the need.
My question is, why would they be here if there was no gap?
That's the logical conclusion.
Right? Why would they be here if there was no gap? If there was no gap, there was no reason to be here.
Nobody does this for fun.
Right? I mean, I mean, we get all these guys and all these payrolls, you think Verizon likes spending its money for nothing?
My Verizon will.
Here's a chance to reduce it.
It's very simple. If there was no gap, there would be no, no hearing.
No, and that is exactly right. And, I mean, and a lot of people surprisingly don't grasp that. I say that all the time at these hearings, so I appreciate that you came to that conclusion, but it's just common sense. You know, we don't invent these things and these things, these facilities, we don't just create them just for fun.
I should have been watching the Celtics tonight and being here.
Yeah. Thankfully, I could probably do both on my way home if I can get some good service.
Okay, we're going to move it along, because we have a lot of people here wanting to discuss. We're actually getting, no, we're going to have someone else come up there? Did you, I mean, it's not going to be like a rebuttal back and forth, so, it's not a courthouse.
Went to the extent, went to the effort of passing a bylaw, so they didn't, there was no blanket prohibition. They had said, yes, you can do it, these are our requirements. And the town went to that effort, and there is no hardship to vary that. They say we can't prohibit. You're not prohibiting, you're simply putting reasonable restrictions to protect your neighbors and protect the town values, and they're not unreasonable. So with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's something there.
What I want to ask Madam, Madam Chair, is that we kind of have an understanding amongst ourselves collectively, that it's, having been through hundreds of hearings, both in my outside world and certainly sitting here as a, as a board member, whenever we have a turnout like this, everybody wants to say something. I get it, I respect it, I understand it. The trouble that we have is, the more people say the same thing over and over again, I'm a human being, I will tune it out if I keep hearing the same thing over and over again. It is just not constructive in any way. I want to hear the concerns. If, if somebody says something that you agree with and it's your turn, come on up and say, you know, I, I agree with Janice, I agree with Ed, that, that's helpful. We have more than one voice. But to repeat what that person has said is destructive to the, to the process here. So I'm begging folks to please get a handle on their presentations. I thank you in advance.
My name's Megan Onone, I'm at 242 Foster Street, and I have some scientific articles I made copies for the board for, if I can. And then as well as a petition, a neighborhood petition that if I can submit. Sorry, 242 Megan Onone, if you can, you begin.
What's the address, I'm sorry?
242 Foster Street.
242.
Megan, before you get going, can I ask you a question, please?
Yep.
Do you have any cell phones in your home?
Yep.
How many?
Four.
Do you have a landline, too?
Nope.
So you have four cell phones.
Yep.
Make sure that the applicant and the assistant gets...
So my, yeah. I don't have a landline. So I'm here to present a petition on the behalf of our neighborhood group called the Friends of Foster Farm, and...
So do you have a copy of the petition?
I submitted it right here, and it's only a copy because it's growing every day.
Actually, we're going to, Valerie, we're going to give this to you?
This petition includes almost 80 signatures from immediate neighbors voicing opposition to the construction of this tower at 122 Foster Street. Together, we are urging our leaders on both the zoning board of appeals and the planning board to deny the variances needed and proposals requested by Varsity Wireless to build a monopole. We believe that other, more appropriate technologies exist, and I want to reference what the Verizon attorney spoke about, capacity versus coverage. I'm going to refer back to his March 9, 2016, application for the CRAN system. On page three of that application, in the project narrative, this is going to be a paragraph that I'm going to read, I quote, "The addition of CRAN network architectures a highly advantageous to, architectures is highly advantageous to municipalities and wireless carriers alike. They eliminate the perceived adverse visual impacts of larger macro facilities like traditional wireless towers, while maximizing network coverage, coverage by using small, discrete antennas to target small areas of greater demand and usage. By the nature, CRAN antennas are only feasible in densely populated areas with some degree of existing fiber optic infrastructure, or the ability to readily deploy the same. Towns like North Andover that fit within this dynamic are therefore able to realize the tremendous benefit of a CRAN network," end quote. That was just from last year, from his very own application. And the next point, point I'm going to make is about property values. And this is the, the scientific journal I have submitted to you for your perusal at a later date. I'm here to submit for the record a peer-reviewed journal article of scientific research proving that cell towers do affect property values. This scientific research was published February of this year, 2017, in the Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics. The study is entitled Wireless Towers and Home Values: An Alternative Valuation Approach Using a Spatial Econometric Analysis. The synopsis of the research is this. The methodology looked at sales of homes after a tower was installed and controlled for many factors. Modeling that was done demonstrated that within a radius of .72 kilometers, which is about .4 or 5 miles, there was a negative price effect that ranged from 2.46% all the way up to 9.78%. Those properties with the most value decline were within tower visibility. In addition, the authors of this study were able to calculate an aggregate property loss value within that .72 kilometer band, and that equaled $24 million. This...
Megan, can I say something?
Yep.
In my package, they have information saying that it shows no difference in property value.
They do. And this is...
So, what are we going to get into, look at Pete?
Okay, so let me, let me talk to you.
He says, she says, all right?
So they hired a consultant.
Can we use common sense and look at the thing and say?
Well, excuse, with all due respect, if I could answer your question, with all due respect.
Okay, because he's saying that it affects, there's no effect on the property values.
He hired a consultant.
And so did you.
This is, this is a scientific journal, peer-reviewed, gold standard of scientific research, peer-reviewed.
Where did you obtain that information?
It's from February 2017.
Where, on, from what, in, via the internet?
I am a, I am a statistician.
Okay.
I have access to scientific journals. I do research for a living. I write and publish papers for a living. I have access to this, and this is a peer-reviewed journal published this year. And if I could finish, finish my presentation, please? And if I could finish, finish my presentation, please? So this is a map of our area showing a .72 kilometer radius around the epicenter. And it just, a visual to give you the amount of homes that will be affected.
One second, how big is, is this?
So this, this is the epicenter and the radius is .72 kilometers, which is the site that they found significant decrease in value, the radius around a cell tower in this journal article. So I just superimposed that radius around the epicenter.
How many miles is that?
That's .45 miles. So one takeaway from the research is that not only homeowners will suffer property value declines, but the town will ultimately have to absorb these losses in the form of reduced property taxes. The authors end this paper with the statement referring to local zoning and regulatory boards. Quote, "Arguably, however, authorities overseeing the process have definitive obligations, perhaps even fiduciary ones, to safeguard the interest and well-being of those whom they serve." Thank you.
My name is Jared. I'm one of the...
242 Foster. I wanted to...
Are you Megan's husband?
Yes.
Okay, so are you gonna say anything different than what Megan just said?
Yes, I'm gonna say something completely different.
Okay.
To the board, I mean, it's fair. Everyone came out tonight. I just want to give everyone an opportunity to speak, so...
But they're the same household, so...
But they might have a different, people in the same households have different opinions, just to let you know, Alan.
My wife tells me what to say.
Jared Omone, yeah. So I'm actually just gonna refer to Verizon's RF report, which is actually included in the packet. And I'm looking at some of the attachments and the coverage maps that are provided in that packet. They start off with essentially a map of existing coverage. I don't have the, I don't know if you can put it up on the slides or not, but you have a map of existing coverage, shows a big white spot in the middle of the, surrounding 122 Foster. Attachment B is gonna be the coverage of the proposed site. What they don't see, what this represents, the color doesn't represent coverage. It represents baseline minimum that they expect for level of service. So in itself is not, doesn't carry any weight that it's actually, the white doesn't mean that you don't have coverage in that area. There's cell signal there. You just don't have what they deem a, you know, what they deem as, as an appropriate level of coverage. If you actually look at attachment C of that same report, they model the coverage being broadcasted from the two towers that they leased from, which is the Boston Road Tower, the one, the satellite tower of Boston Road, and then one off in Chestnut Street. And you can actually see in most of that, that, that area, there actually is cell signal. It's below their threshold, but there is cell signal along all of Foster Street up to Winter Street and in most of the Vest and Bridges neighborhood. It also covers South Bradford to the north of it. And if you know, that someone else will present here, that if you drive around the neighborhood, you have coverage. Can I watch Netflix as I'm going down the street? No, it lags.
Should you?
Should I? No, it lags. But in general, if I need to make a phone call, I can make a phone call. Most of this area is residential homes. And in most cases, most people do have broadband in place, whether it's FiOS or Comcast. And so my lack of coverage doesn't necessarily affect my quality of life of being able to watch Netflix. I do, I do it off Wi-Fi. In most cases, the new technology, most new phones, and in this, people upgrade their phones, new phones have the ability to, to route the call through Wi-Fi. So it completely bypasses Verizon's cellular network. And it just, the call quality is just, this is, is as good as if I'm on the network. So I don't understand what the need for, if we already have coverage in the area, and then, it seems like what they're trying to do is, they're, they're, they're trying to force us to give what they deem as acceptable level of coverage. The other thing I wanted to look at was that, on that same report, the topography, the topography map of attachment, is attachment E, is essentially, if you look at the topographical area of North Andover, you look at where the existing sites are. And what do they have in common? They're all on high ground. The, the Boston Tower is off that satellite site. Chestnut's on a hill. Up to the north on the Boxer Line, which is off the, of Great Pond, there's a, it's called Boxer West. That's on a hill. Where they're citing this tower is actually in depression. It's in a bowl. There are three significant hills around that site that effectively limit the coverage only within that area. If you look at their coverage maps, all of Winter Street, Haymarket, Bruin Hill, that neighborhoods don't get any coverage. Why? Because they're in the shadow of the, of the hill that the, that the power lines run up off Foster Street. So putting this tower down low in front of a hill, it effectively blocks out a good portion of coverage for an area of the town that actually would need it. They talk about improving coverage on Boxer Street. They have the CRAN systems, which are not live and they're not reflected on any of the coverage maps, that are already on that street. And that street is not particularly densely populated. Yes, there's a couple of neighborhoods which go off, Stone, Cleve, and so forth. But in general, it's, it's wetlands, is basically a layer of house on each side of Boxer Street, and then wetlands on one side. And then to the north of it, you have the Foster Fields and more wetlands in Mesquite Brook. So the, this, this large area that you deem an important amount of coverage is actually mostly conservation land. It's mostly Foster Fields. Most of the neighborhoods already have some way to get out to the internet via broadband systems. And, you know, putting this tower and all the variances associated with it to basically cover open space, doesn't make a lot of sense. As an alternative, I know that there's a tower off Johnson Street, right? It's, it looks like, it's not shown on this map, but it's essentially another large, it's on the hill. I think the elevation's at 300 feet. From what it looks like, it's 190 feet tall from what I looked on the, on the, on the internet or on the, the specifications for that tower. If we're looking at an elevation of 105 feet on a low depression, if they lease space on an existing tower, which the bylaw says that they should actually utilize all of the additional capacity, wouldn't that signal broadcast from Johnson Street all the way, more or less, from the, to the Boxer Line? If you look at this coverage again, related to the two, the two existing towers, you can see that the Boston Tower already broadcasted terrain all the way almost to the Boxer Line. If you have another tower next to it in that same location, almost 100 feet higher than the existing towers, what kind of coverage would you have and does that improve it and take care of the, the perceived issue that we're having in the neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you.
Some nice numbers to follow up on what Jared said. My name is Mike Fox. I live at 45 Bridges Lane. We have 45 bridges. We have five cell phones. Pardon me?
Do you have any cell phones?
We have five. They're all, they're all Verizon.
You have five cell phones at 45 Bridges Lane?
Yep.
Thank you.
So I guess, I'm trying not to repeat anything that Jared said. If you could just go to the second page there, you're gonna see the, the good old coverage map that we've all looked at. I guess the first thing I would direct you to is there's 15 kind of red circles in the middle there. Sorry about the size. These are all in the area that is marked as having less than minus 95 dBMs. I guess, you know, I'm learning a lot, you know, even today. And one of the things I found out online is anywhere between minus 90 and minus 100 dBMs is considered to be an average signal. It doesn't mean there's no signal. And, you know, clearly that map is showing a white area where it's less than minus 95. And then all of a sudden, you've got green where it's better than minus 95. So it's a bit of a transition there. My, I basically just drove around the neighborhood. I was in a car. I had a Verizon iPhone 6. I had a AT&amp;T iPhone 5S. I stopped at locations about a fifth mile apart and I initiated a call from the Verizon phone to the AT&amp;T phone. I talked to myself for 30 seconds, which was kind of strange, but I've been known to do that. Not a single call was dropped. I, I can pretty much guarantee you can go anywhere on Bridges, Vest, Christian, Tiffany. I went down Foster. I had anywhere between good and fair quality for the call.
Did you use the internet?
Yes. So that was kind of the, the call part of it, which I wanted to test. There's an app called Speed Test that Ucla makes that you can download to your phone. I used that to test the internet coverage. So that tests the, the latency, so how long it takes for a signal to go up to the internet and back. It tests your downstream bandwidth and it tests your upstream bandwidth. And the, the latency averaged, all this data's on the back page, but it averaged about, between .29 for Verizon, or sorry, 58 for Verizon and 42 for AT&amp;T. So AT&amp;T went out a little bit there, sorry. Which is very good. I mean, that's, that's a very good ping time. Lower, lower is better, obviously. The downstream bandwidth, I got an average of 3.63 megabits per second. So you're not gonna be watching the Celtics in 4K or anything, but you're gonna be able to use Google Maps and, and read emails, no problem. I mean, that, some, some houses, even through Comcast, you might be lucky to have 10 megabits per second. We have FiOS, we get 40. You know, that's inside the house. But 3.6 for out in the street is pretty darn good. Upstream bandwidth, I was a little surprised. It was, it was pretty bad. So, and that was the case even in areas where the coverage was really good. So if you, if you're gonna live anywhere, live at 75 Foster because I got 23 megabits per second of downstream. So, yeah, you can watch Netflix there, no problem. But even at that location, I was only getting about one megabit per second upstream. Sorry, did you have a question?
No, no, no.
So, you know, in places, you're, you're not gonna wanna try to send, you know, one megabit image. It's gonna take 30 seconds to, to send that. But as far as calls and being able to use Google Maps, download data, I guess, I'm really not sure what problem this, this cell tower is trying to solve, at least in the areas where I was doing my tests. The third page there, the one that's all pink, people, people can probably see it from there, that's T-Mobile's coverage map. That was actually the best one that I found in line in that you can put in a zip code and go right down to the street level. So the dark pink areas are what they consider to be good and the lighter pink areas are considered to be fair. And you can actually go and tap on individual houses and you'll get user feedback talking about how their cellular coverage is. So the one that I clicked on there that's up, there's a little pipe stand off of Vest Way. It says, "Good signal, call reception outdoors in most homes and in some big buildings."
This is from an app?
No, this is actually, you can go to T-Mobile. There's a link in the back.
Oh, okay.
So you can go to that link that's in the back there and try this out yourself, if you want. But you just search for T-Mobile coverage map and you'll find it. And I guess, you know, just to echo what Jared was saying, once you go indoors, the quality's not gonna be as good. I cannot make calls down in our basement. However, about two years ago, that all didn't matter anymore because we, many devices now do Wi-Fi calling. So our own Verizon device has got that about a year ago and we just have crystal clear calls throughout our house. So, you know, I definitely sympathize because there are some people in our neighborhood that, that don't have very good cellular coverage. But if they get a newer phone, the, the Google Pixel supports it, the, anything newer than an iPhone 6, the Galaxy Note 8 supports it, you don't need to use cellular. Just, just use Wi-Fi calling. It's brilliant. So I, I think that's it. I mean, like I said, the, the last two pages, I described how I tested things and I've got the raw data there, so it's, it's really exciting. I recommend you dig into it.
Thank you. Just give me a couple more. I'm sorry, what's that?
An extra copy of whatever it was.
Just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Just for the record, if you submit stuff to the board, can you please submit it to the applicant as well?
I'm Tom Baird, 75 Foster Street. I'm the one with the strongest signal. And my wife and I are giggling because after 45 years in high tech, I cut the...
How many cell phones does yours have?
None.
You have no cell phones?
No, I wanna, I, I work with people face to face all day long, every day. And if you want me, you can just use the landline.
I assume you have a landline?
Yes. We're retired. We don't need...
Landline, no cells.
Right. Well, we have a couple in the car for emergencies.
So you do have cell phones?
Yeah, if you will. The track phones.
Track phones.
That doesn't count.
Say it again. We have cell phones in the car, but we don't have cell phones.
We don't use them. They're...
But do you have them?
Alan, what is it?
There's no minutes on them. They just sit there.
And so you're at 75 Foster?
Yeah, yeah. I want to focus on the bylaws and hopefully not repeat anything. First of all, I just want to read a couple of sentences from the bylaws. I, I don't know that everybody's had a chance to read the bylaws. I've read them all. They're very well-written and thorough. I'm impressed. The, under the purpose at the very beginning, it says, "It's the express purpose of this bylaw to minimize the visual and environmental impacts as well as any potential deleterious impact on property value. The general bylaws are designed to encourage appropriate land use and to preserve the rural character of North Andover." It also uses later on the word "respect" for North Andover rural character. And then in section three, and I'll get to this in a moment, it doesn't talk about the, the facility, the provider for the facility has to provide superior service to the public, but simply adequate. All of us from the, the Friends of the Foster Farm are in fully, fully in support of all our neighbors receiving the best possible cellphone coverage. This particular project, however, which began in 2014, is old 20th century technology. We should be looking forward to the future for the 21st century technology, such as distributed antenna systems called DAS. The good news about DAS is, I don't think there's gonna be any variances, that would be required, any variances against the, the bylaws. No zoning variances, no height issue. It would save the scenic beauty and the historical significance, not only on Foster Street, but throughout North Andover. Because this, this, this type of application or system or technology could be used everywhere in North Andover, not only just residential, but also commercial. And it will not affect property values. Also, DAS would, does comply with FCC requirements on their Telecommunications Act, so that would not be an issue. A few other things that are perhaps a little bit incidental but important is the fact that with a DAS system, this flexibility. And the problem with Foster Street in particular is all the hills and valleys. That's what, when the last glacier melted, that's what it left behind. So we've got hills and dales everywhere. Even with a tall cell tower, you're still gonna have places where there's gonna be poor coverage. But with the DAS system, you can custom-design it. And I don't think, and I'm not an expert on this, but I don't think the DAS, a DAS system is the same thing as small cells. Because in Wellesley, they've gone with a DAS system throughout the town. They got, right now, 48 nodes and slash antennas. Because what you do is, if you've got an area where you need height because of trees or hill, you put in an antenna. That antenna can be on top of a telephone pole or on the ground. I've seen both. If you look out on the internet and just type in images from Google on DAS systems and telephone poles, you'll see them all. There, there's nothing there that's obnoxious, nothing that detracts from the value of the scenic value or the historical value. So it has real possibilities. And the other thing that I think is important is it would allow for future growth. If we put in a new... If we put in a new development somewhere in our area, we can just expand the DAS system. Also, just a couple of FOIs. This technology has been in use for now for 30 years, so it's a proven technology. The industry is growing rapidly, and there's a lot of development in the technology. Right now, the market value for the DAS growth, it was back in 2015, $6.7 billion in market value, and it's expected by 2022 to be $10.7 billion. So I hope that the, the other thing that I think that both the zoning and the planning board should take into consideration is the possibility of using DAS instead of a cell tower is something that's going to affect the entire town. And I think that it should be part of the town's master plan. So I just wanted to bring you up there. Those are the things that I see that are important from the decision-making for the zoning board.
Thank you. So it is getting late at 9:00. We still have, no, I can still, but if you can speed it up, the comments, and just so we can hear everyone, if you can limit the time that we can give everyone, just kind of hit-and-run type thing?
Good evening. I'm Pam Rivet. I live at 67 Foster Street. I realize that my first question may not, this may not be the right forum for this.
I'll let you know.
It's relative to the 61A designation on this property?
We haven't actually addressed it yet, so don't...
Okay. So this property is 61A designated, and Mr. Young, the property owner, signed the lease with Varsity three years ago. And where he was getting a reduced tax rate, and the intention was obviously eventually to have a tower put on the property, should the town have been notified back then? And is it actually legal for him to have a commercial lease on a 61A property?
I can't answer that for you, so when they come back and they'll let us, they'll answer it for us.
Yeah, I think that's a question that should be answered. Relative, I know you know the bylaw, but just for everybody's purpose, there's one part in there about the setbacks, and that's obviously specific to the variances that are being asked about here. But in terms of the setback, the bylaw says, "In order to ensure public safety, the minimum distance from the base of any ground-mounted wireless service facility to any property line shall be..." "...a minimum setback of 600 feet shall be required for all wireless devices, blah, blah, blah." So that's why, so that's where the variances come into play. So the first part of it is, "In order to ensure public safety." So I don't understand how a variance could be granted for a setback when safety is in question. And I understand that it's about hardship. However, it's hard for me to understand how hardship for Verizon, paying a little bit more money for a taller tower, or a little bit more money for a longer access road, somehow that doesn't seem like that hardship would be in place of the safety of the residents. Obviously, that fall zone is there for a reason. So I don't understand why you can't put a tower on the property that's back from the road, back from the neighbors, so where there's no fall zone variances required, and at 90 feet, which would be based on the documents, if the tree canopy is 80 feet, then the bylaw says it can be 10 feet above the tree canopy, so at 90 feet, and then fill in with small cells. I don't see how that would be a hardship. Also, they talked about a, that this is the only site available. Well, they provided a list of sites they considered, and yet it doesn't seem like they really went through that very thoroughly. They claim that that's the only site available, but there's town-owned open space that would be tucked away from the road, and it wouldn't be as sightly. Is town-owned open space off limits for towers to be built on?
I can't answer that for you. It's not, it's not our board to determine. That would be the planning board unless they violate it.
Okay, because there's several areas. There were several sites on that list. There was one site that was actually listed twice, and then they also talk about the National Grid. They've talked about, they can't put it on the structures, I understand that, but what about, what about land on that National Grid-owned property? There's an example in Boxford where they're doing exactly that, so I'm not sure that it really is believable that they actually reached out to National Grid about that. So the fact is that they've been paying three years for this land from Mr. Young. So they don't want another alternative, they don't want another site. They've already picked their site. So they're going to keep telling me that this is the most optimal site, but the law doesn't state that you have to approve the optimal site. It's all about providing, you know, coverage to the neighbors, to the community. So there are alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I want to give someone else an opportunity, since you spoke already, so...
My name's Rob Jones. I live at 643 South Bradford Street. I'm about a half-mile away from the site. I think, the thing that I would like to understand from you is how the hardship on the citizens, the residents around this facility come into play. We heard a lot about the hardship, apparent hardship, from the applicant, and I think the other folks who've spoken have made it pretty clear that there are alternatives. A lot of us already have adequate coverage. I myself, I've lived in the town since 2008, not that long compared to probably a lot of you, but I've had AT&amp;T cell service that whole time. We have four phones in our house. And I also have a Pico cell in my house, which I talked about at the last planning board meeting. So certainly in my house, I don't have great cell service directly from the cell towers, but AT&amp;T has given me a Pico cell that gives me great coverage in my house. And as other people have said, the newest phones have Wi-Fi-enabled cellular service. So a cell tower coverage in my house is not necessary. It's probably not necessary in any of the houses we're talking about. It might be necessary driving down some of the roads in the area, but that comes back to the question about the hardship for us. We heard about property values being affected. We should also take into account the rural nature of the area, okay? I didn't really recognize this when I moved to the area, but we have incredible rural scenery. We have an incredible network of trails. I'm going to be very, very upset if this tower goes in and I walk on Foster Farm and see that tower across the field. Like you, I volunteer my time for two trail organizations, Friends of North Andover Trails and Friends of Harold Parker. I don't do that so that I can go out and walk the trails and see an unsightly tower. I can't even imagine what the people directly adjacent to this property must be feeling about what they're going to see out of their windows, and when they go outside, they sit on their deck. So I'd really like to understand, it sounded like the Telecommunications Act potentially trumps anything we have in our bylaws. Those bylaws, is my understanding, we all agree as a community, the board, the residents, we all agreed to those rules. And now we're asking, these people are asking to violate them, and in some respects aggressively violate them, for a commercial entity. And that's just, that's really wrong. And I'd like to understand from the board what rights we have, and are they just going to be trumped by this Telecommunications Act? Because what I've heard is there are plenty of alternatives, and a lot of people already have adequate coverage, maybe not optimal coverage.
So it's not for us to determine their hardship. It's the applicant before us to prove to us that they have a hardship.
What about the hardship for the residents around it?
And that's all part of the process, so we do take that into consideration. And we do look at the purpose of the bylaw and the intent, and, I mean, I do, and I'm pretty sure this board does as well, seriously. So we take everything into consideration with outside consultants, with the town, the town as a whole. We have you here, we're listening to everything that you're saying, and we're listening to the applicant as well, so...
Okay.
One of the answers to what I think...
It's going to say it a lot nicer, too.
What I think was one of your questions is, everybody reports to a higher power. So in no way am I advocating for, or in support of, or gleefully announcing this. Just saying that the Telecommunications Act does have some very strong powers that can, not always do, reasonable restrictions, as Attorney Caffrey indicated over and over again, is certainly within the parameters here. But the Telecommunications, just like 40B, there's a higher power that overrides many of the zoning bylaws that you agreed to a town meeting, that we implement on a weekly, daily, monthly basis, that everybody's going to be reviewing as a part of the master planning process. So I hear you loud and clear. I feel the trample that you're feeling when the Telecommunications Act says something different than what my bylaws say. But we live in a reality of those, the interplay of those two things. So the consequences of those is, if at the end of the day, the applicant doesn't like the decision, and they think that our decision-making was faulty, then they just take the decision to court. They litigate it. The same thing is true of any of the abutters. I believe there is standing, any of the abutters can litigate a decision that they don't agree with and that they think they have legal standing to challenge.
So does that possibility of legal action against the town of North Andover factor into your decision? Because my understanding is, this company has been rejected...
There's nobody on this board that flies from a fight.
I understand...
There's no fear of that fight. So if you're asking, do we weigh the possibility of an applicant challenging a decision that we make in court? Doesn't enter my mind, and I have never heard any of the other board members say that. Same thing is true. Are we fearful that an abutter or friends are going to challenge? No. We make the decision based on the materials that are in front of us, the testimony that is provided, and then there is a balance. There is, we certainly look at the bylaw, we certainly look at the TCA, we look at the evidence that's presented. It's extraordinarily gratifying to me that, I honestly don't remember who it was, but someone, Megan, I think, brought in this journal article. I have no idea the validity of this thing. So I believe Megan when she says that it's a gold star, peer review, all that kind of stuff, but I'm going to go check it out for myself, because there are plenty of shoddy journals out there that will print anything that somebody writes. Same thing is true of the applicant's report from their appraisers, or whomever it was, says that there's no impact. I'm going to weigh these two things. I'm not going to swallow theirs, I'm not going to swallow Megan's. But the reality is, we got to balance it.
I want to say about the peer-reviewed journal is, it documents the scientific method that was applied to come up with the answer. I don't think the same rigor went into the analysis that you were given by the consultant. So please read it very carefully and understand it, but remember that the scientific method is the gold standard for understanding an issue like this.
Thank you.
Springer's a reputable publisher, too.
How do you know things?
Because I know Springer. Springer. Okay, just a couple more, and then we're going to wrap it up.
Thomas Emmons, 135 Foster Street. My house is probably the closest to this tower next to Elaine's at 162. Literally across the street, up the hill, right there. I have questions. Everybody's covered pretty much, most of my questions. I was told that it emits sound, noise. Is that true?
So questions will be fed through the board?
Okay.
And then the applicant will have an opportunity to answer those questions.
Okay. I'm concerned if there's humming sounds, or, because it's very quiet out where we are now, and that's part of why we like being out where we are, you know? Does he want to know? I have three cell phones and a landline. And a landline, and I have very good service.
Love it, I love it.
You didn't even have to ask.
Don't even have to ask now, right?
So my concern, I understand progress has to move on sometime. I just thought it could be less invasive as to where it is regarding my property or anywhere in that area. And that's about it? Thank you.
Excuse me one second. Can you address the question about sound?
He will. He's going to, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's going to be our last one.
Okay.
Unless anyone...
I'll be here, I agree.
Okay. 31 Bridges Lane, Lisa Roberts. Three cell phones, three cell phones. Verizon, Verizon, AT&amp;T. And they all work great. So I don't think the Telecommunications Act was created to allow companies like this to strong-arm communities like us. I think it's sad, what they're trying to do. It's going to sit 1,200 feet off my front door. Every single day I walk out the door, I'm going to see this god-awful tower. And every meeting I come to, I get more angry every time I see you. I have to say it, because I'm fuming. Newer technology is here, this is an old business model. DAS is excellent for working around the hills, working around communities. And as they attested to, you drive into your house and you're covered. I'd like to formally request, I don't know how to do this, a new balloon test, so that every, we can alert everyone, so they can see how high this balloon is going to be, and thus the tower. So I don't know how to go about that? That would be to the planning board. Okay, so I ask them, okay. Since they originally requested it, so... Okay. And the site markings with the new, I wasn't able to go to the first site visit, so I will eagerly go to the next one when that, has that been published when that is?
No.
No. Okay. So I just want to take a step back, and while we're debating over this large cell tower, I think we need to take a step back, because we do have a town's master plan. And I think something like this needs to be considered as akin to town sewer, town water, town electric, telephone. It needs to be a part of the bigger plan and thought through, have some forethought to it, instead of just putting towers in piecemeal to kind of fix these small zones, which we actually proved doesn't even exist a bad zone. We have great cell coverage here, except for maybe a few households that sit next to a cliff or behind a hill. They can take care of that in their own home, but when you drive through that neighborhood, it's absolutely fine. So I sent an email today to many people, and I'm just going to read the last paragraph just to close with. "We present this information to you as we feel cell service would be included in the town's master plan and planned similarly to electric, town sewer, town water, and more. As part of the master plan, we're addressing the town's high-tech broadband future, which will not only impact the quality of life for residents, but is also, will also be beneficial to the town's business community. If we include cell coverage in our master plan and show that we're working to better the town's coverage, we immediately abide by the Communications Act of 1996 under our own terms and conditions. Many other communities are turning to DAS as a viable and more attractive alternative to large towers. We welcome any discussion regarding this and will happily share our research with you in an effort to stop this unsightly tower in our neighborhood." And I really do hope this doesn't turn into Boxford and Westford, where there's litigation pending, and you're bringing the board to court, to federal court, because it's not necessary in this town. Thank you.
Julie Ross, I'm at 104 Bridges Lane, and I just want to say, we have terrible coverage at our house. We have four cell phones, we have AT&amp;T. And my, I have a brand-new phone, and my calls will drop on Foster Street and one of my driveway. I go on business trips in my car, and I have to wait. Google Maps will not connect, and I have to wait until, sometimes I'm past Foster Street on to Salem Street for it to connect, and I have a brand-new phone. So we've always had issues with service at our house. And I know it doesn't sound like it's the experience for most people, but it certainly is for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you also receive copies of the emails that we got? Okay. Valerie, can, okay. Because for the record, we have Marilyn Clausen, Pam Rivet, Justin Owens, Louis Ferraro. This is from Megan, I think you hear Megan, I don't know how to say your last name, yep. Susan Sabia, and Mark and Judith Johnson. And Valerie will send these to you as well.
Do you actually want to just take my copies?
Oh, that's how you have copies, all right. She's not just giving them up, she already has copies.
I know, stuffed up today.
Okay, so I think some of the issues that, you know, we're going to give you a brief time to answer some of the issues, and I think what I got out of it is how is gap drop calls determined? Real estate comparison, CRAN network is the chosen site? Created your, is this created in your own hardship? If you can touch on the DA at DAS, which I'm not aware of, 61A? Visual environmental impact the sound? And if we can discuss a new sidewalk as well?
So I'm going to take them slightly out of order because the 61A, to the extent it is an issue, it's not a legal impediment to going forward with an application. If the area is, for the proposed tower, is actually within part of the 61A restricted land, the 100% of the lot is not restricted. It would ultimately need to be removed. In my experience, in several instances where facilities have gone on 61A or 61B restricted land, we've typically done that after. It is one of those, one of those steps that needs to happen, but it is not an impediment to this board or the planning board making a decision from a legal perspective. So I understand it's a question, but in terms of going forward with the application, we have the right to go ahead and do that.
So how much land are you talking about?
I mean, really, the 4,000-square-foot compound is the vast majority of it. In general, if you have to take out the 61A land, it's the compound, the area associated with the access for the facilities, so the turnaround, where transformer, where the transformers located just outside the compound, really anything associated with the non-agricultural or under 61B forest use. But it's a, it's-
So you run into this problem before?
Many times.
And for you, it's not an impediment?
No, no. Ultimately, that process needs to be followed before the facility could be constructed, but it's, it doesn't prevent a board from going forward. I'll address sound next because it's fairly fast. We did talk about it, I think we've talked about it, the planning board, but for folks who may have missed that, there is an environmental sound study in the application. The bylaw sets a standard, it's 50 dB at the property line. Facility meets that. 50 dB is approximately, according to the chart in the sound study included with the initial application. Moderate rainfall. It's also really the same level as normal conversation and even, probably even less than the humming I'm hearing from the back there. In terms of noise-producing elements, the tower and the antennas itself don't produce noise. The only, the noise elements that, or anything that generates noise are the equipment cabinets. They are internally regulated with thermostats, so they have small internal fans in them. Those, just like any heating unit or AC unit, don't run continuously. They kick on and off depending on the overall temperature. The generator for emergency backup power is included in the noise study. It still complies with the noise requirements. The generator, again, is not something that runs consistently. It would run, you know, approximately for a half hour, 45 minutes, once a week for kind of a routine maintenance cycle. That cycle can be set, so it's not going off at 3:00 in the morning, so it's going off during an appropriate point during the day. Otherwise, it would run when the, if the facility loses power. The primary is battery backup for the site, so, you know, a few-hour loss. Generator probably isn't even necessary. It doesn't necessarily have to kick off. Beyond that, where we've had extended power loss, like from the last storms where, you know, areas lost power for a few days, generator would kick on, would allow the facility to continue to provide communications in the area despite the power loss.
Did I hear you say that 50 decibels is not exceeded-
Correct.
-in the compound?
Correct.
And that's state, or that's a standard set by-
That's in our ordinance.
Yeah, in ours, ours is at that state.
It's yours.
In the North Andover, by the town, not by state.
Correct.
Okay.
In terms of how the gap is defined, you know, we've heard a couple things on that. One, a lot of testimony of, well, I have coverage, and other testimony of I don't have, I don't have great coverage. The good news is, in some ways, the board doesn't have to rely on that and shouldn't rely on that. The cases are pretty clear that, you know, anecdotal testimony, even something is the, I forget the gentleman's name, where the kind of did his own little self-study there in terms of, you know, making a few calls or trying to access the internet in a few places. That kind of evidence is rejected and has been rejected by the courts in favor of the, really, the industry standard of radio frequency propagation maps. In addition, we've also provided drive test data. That was included with the original RF report. It is that kind of scientific, reliable data that is credited by the courts as credible and authoritative. It is routinely relied on by the boards. This board's consultant are radio frequency engineers and doing radio frequency engineering design, boards and the courts.
So imagine I would do a test to determine the gap?
Not always, but, you know, carriers routinely do drive tests of networks in general. We have a drive test for this area.
My question is, what's the difference between an employee for Verizon doing a drive test as opposed to a resident doing a drive test?
Well, they use, they use specific equipment for, calibrated equipment for a drive test that gives them values for not just a subjective, well, my call went through or I thought it was fast enough. And the app that the gentleman used, my understanding is it has some accuracy issues. They use industry-accepted standards and protocols and equipment to go out and perform testing. In addition, on top of that, that isn't even necessary. I mean, typically, radio frequency propagation maps, you know, again, are enough and are considered credible and authoritative by the courts.
How are those determined?
There's a number of factors that go into them. Actually, Martin, I'm not even going to try and explain what goes into a coverage map, if you could.
Martin Laban, C Squared Systems. The first thing we do usually is do a drive test. We take a calibrated receiver out in a car, we scan all of the frequencies that Verizon uses, using statistically valid criteria to average out variations. There's all sorts of fading and variations in the signal. Some fade, some are averaged out, some are in, and we use that to calibrate the model we use to predict the coverage everywhere that we did in drive.
So who employs, Verizon would employ-
Yes.
-to do it?
And we've been doing that, I've been doing this for 30 years, my company's been doing it for 17.
Okay. Thank you.
But Martin, can you just very briefly explain some of the criteria that go into the coverage plot themselves, things like clutter and how that's included?
Yes, the model takes into account the measured data, it's calibrated against that. It uses the land use, land clutter database from the government as a way of refining the measurements based not just on terrain data, which is the primary thing most people use, but the underlying land use is. We adjust 15 different parameters to tune the model, to make it reflect the measured data we have from the field and use that to make our predictions from the proposed site and for all the other ones around it.
So just so I, I think, so to clear everyone, so the coverage plots take into account things like terrain, the, well, terrain and topography are the same, but things like the average tree height and other types of-
15 of the guy who wrote the land is including an average tree height for the area. And it's all, the predictions are then compared to the measurements to make sure they match up.
In terms of, you know, people have said, well, you know, is the, what's Verizon's criteria? This is just Verizon's standard. I mean, Verizon has obviously decades of experience with its own network and what it needs to be able to provide to provide a consistent and reliable user experience. I mean, some of what you've heard tonight is some people saying, my coverage is pretty good, some people saying, it's not so good. The standard that Verizon uses is a standard for this market to ensure that it is providing a consistent and reliable user experience, the experience that frankly their users are demanding. In terms of the other half of that of, well, you know, I can use Wi-Fi calling or the gentleman that has a Pico cell, those are great additional add-ons or Band-Aids. But again, the courts have rejected those kinds of additional technologies. They are, they are helpful and to the extent they solve a particular individual's problem, that is great for them, but the courts have said specifically with regard to things like Pico cells and femto cells, that they are not a substitute for the need to be able to provide adequate coverage on a broad basis to the geographic area. That includes things like rollover Wi-Fi calling, and it's not available to everyone. If you're not, if you don't have access to someone's Wi-Fi, you're not going to roll, and so you're not going to have access to the network. And so those kinds of additional technologies, while, you know, great on a personal level because they may solve a specific need for you or for that particular person, in terms of defining whether or not a gap is significant or adequate service is being provided, that's been rejected.
Could I ask? Sure. Sorry, I've forgotten your name, so I'm rudely, rudely just referring to you as a mister. I'm not, I'm too ignorant to ask a specific question, so hopefully you can kind of interpret the question, figure, kind of figure out what the answer, what I'm trying to ask and come up with the answer, which is, so there's an awful lot of science that goes into modeling. I think there's a, I suspect that there's a similar amount of art that goes into the assumptions and the averages and all that kind of stuff. So maybe I'll ask you an unfair question, but still ask you nonetheless, which is, what's the weakness in the modeling that generates these maps?
The data we work on is in 30-meter bins. Our predictions are in 30-meter bins, approximately 100 feet by 100 feet. Between the amount of processing power we have and how soon we need it to finish someday, that's about as much as we can handle now. In a huge area like this, it would just take too long to get down. The underlying data that we have for terrain and land use is only available in 30-meter bins. Once you get below that, what you're looking for is an average in each bin. We measure an average in the drive test, we look for an average in our modeling. Once you get down to lower resolution than that, it becomes an impossible calculation to make in the amount of time anyone has in their life. And it also, the variance would depend on things that are much too small to be in our terrain base and our clutter database. You'd be down to each and every tree. We don't have each and every tree. We have an assumed tree height. We have an assumed, based on the area and tuned to match the data we measured on the roads. It would be affected in a microscopic scale from going around inside your house. It's affected by too many things that no one could ever catalog and that change from day to day even, where your, you know, vehicle going by or something of that nature. When you get down to that level, there just isn't enough data in the world to predict any more accurately than we do.
It's coming though, right?
It will have to be, it would have to be updated on a weekly basis almost.
Yeah, maybe not in our lifetimes, but that data's coming.
Kind of return you'd want on the investment you'd have to make in modeling this, yeah.
But Martin, that's an industry, and the tool you use is an industry standard. The issues you're talking about are industry standard.
Industry standard. Everyone uses 30-meter terrain data. We also use 30-meter clutter to refine things further. It's a specific model created by the Canadian Research Center called Predict 2.0. It is more or less state-of-the-art.
And just a quick interpretation, I have a guess, but you're going to be way better. 30 meters in feet are, thank you.
So one other thing on the gap, I know there was a T-Mobile map submitted. I'm not going to go into all the issues that, I think, because I think we may have talked about this, but I go into the issues related to personal coverage check maps and why the courts have actually rejected those as non-engineering tools. But it's more important to point out that it's a T-Mobile map, and T-Mobile is not one of the two carriers we are looking at and discussing in terms of their gap as part of this application. Chris, you?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit of extra perspective besides the scientific data. The federal law will never set a threshold or a bar that says, your service is this good, stop trying. It's the exact 100% opposite of that. When you read the title of the Telecommunications Act, the full title, that's like half a page long, it's about competition, promoting competition for the American people. The way competition is promoted, by encouraging every single provider of telecommunications equipment to do better, to constantly do better. And it's not only about wireless, it's about telecommunications services, which includes wireless, but includes other things, for example broadband. So it's a very inaccurate statement with respect to the federal law to say that there is an alternative by using the Wi-Fi in your house. It's the exact opposite. The idea here is to promote these providers to compete with each other so that one day, when the one or two companies, where I live it's one, that provide internet service are now charging you $700 a month, perhaps the service you can get from your wireless provider is as good or better for less money. This is about providing better choices and more competition to the American consumer. So there will never be a bar that is set that is good enough.
What year was the Telecommunications Act come out? Did it come out?
1996.
Was it ever revised yet?
Not yet. It's actually, 1996 is a revision of the initial act from the 1930s.
1934.
Did it bypass, did it just eliminate the whole act and just-
No, it added, it added on to it, but the provisions that relate to wireless come from 96. The only, they are not direct revisions, but the other revisions actually come from the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012 that promote things like co-location as well, that make streamline that process, which is in part what we were talking about before. A couple of things on the gap, in terms of, you know, some, someone's saying, well, you know, we're providing service elsewhere in town, so clearly we're not prohibiting service. It's kind of the same thing when we're talking about blanket bans. Just because coverage is being provided somewhere else in the municipality doesn't mean that it can then allow a significant gap in coverage in a different area of town to persist. So it's a geographic and area-specific analysis in terms of, is the area that sought to be covered significant? And we've provided the traffic and population data to demonstrate that it is, along with the radio frequency engineer's opinion that that gap is significant, and the consultant has agreed with that. And so then the question becomes, is there a, is there an, does it meet the bylaw criteria? And if it doesn't, is there, does the federal law step in and preempt that and dictate approval anyway? So it's a area-specific and carrier-specific. So just because T-Mobile may have coverage, or maybe they don't, I don't necessarily agree with the T-Mobile map, but just because one carrier has coverage in an area doesn't mean the, a board is free to say, well, we have T-Mobile, that's enough. It is, it's carrier-specific as well in terms of their need to cover, cover gaps. I'll touch on the CRAN and the DAS part. Actually, the statement that was read attributed to Mr. Swornoski, I actually thought was almost spot-on to what he had said earlier in terms of, it has a limited footprint, it is generally, you know, we talked about it in terms of Mr. Coach's question, in terms of, yeah, and there's some coverage, but it really is capacity-focused and it has a limited footprint. Everything in that statement continues to be true. Where appropriate, Verizon permitted approximately 50 CRAN nodes. Where it will not work and provide the overriding solution, Verizon is here seeking the macro coverage to provide it. And so those, those two statements and that prior application is actually entirely consistent with what we've been talking about, that, that type of small cell architecture, and DAS is really just another flavor of small cell architecture, will not provide the necessary coverage. In terms of, you know, a distributed antenna system, one, again, you know, DAS is very area-specific, and so it works well indoors. Like Voxborough has a DAS system and still doesn't necessarily provide adequate coverage. The TD Garden, same thing. There are areas where a DAS system such as, or small cells such as downtown Boston will work, or in the focused locations that Verizon has installed CRAN nodes. However, DAS still requires that same infrastructure or similar infrastructure as a CRAN node. You still need to have, you know, the ability to put fiber to connect them back either to a head-end or directly to the network, and the same infrastructure that doesn't exist for CRAN doesn't exist for DAS. And so that, again, that type of system just is inappropriate given the overall size of the gap to be covered here and the nature of it and the overall lack of infrastructure. I want to say one other thing on, well, DAS is better. Varsity is not the only wireless client I represent. I represent companies that do small cells or DAS, and the number of times that installations and nodes have been proposed in locations either similar to or even vastly different from this type of neighborhood, you know, whether it's in a city or in a suburb like North Andover, they get often the same type of opposition, if not more. And I want to be clear, if, you know, something like DAS, something like CRAN requires something, you can't just put them on the ground. They need the height. So you're talking, you know, somewhere between 30 and 60 feet for nodes, you're talking about putting new poles in areas that don't have them, in neighborhoods that don't have them, in front of homes that don't have them. So while it may sound like a panacea, it is absolutely not. And beyond that, it absolutely, it will not technically work in the area that needs to be covered here because the vast majority of that area to be covered doesn't have the infrastructure to support it. infrastructure to support it. Did you have anything else on C-RAN?
Yeah, just a simplification. It's just shrinking down and densifying the network. That's a good way to understand it. So you have these larger macro facilities that provide coverage in a larger area, and the C-RAN or DAS distributed antenna systems are shorter, smaller things that cover smaller areas where there's more density. That's all there is to it. As Brian was saying, it's, it's not magic. It still requires facilities everywhere, and what we're talking about here are areas where there are no existing facilities, support structures to hold these antennas in the air. That is still necessary. There is no technology available that has made wireless service that American people use possible by not having antennas in the air. Cannot be done as far as anybody knows today. So it's not this, this magic cure that some people have said it is. It's not even significantly different for the criteria that we're evaluating.
And the last thing I would address is, one of the comments, it was from the gentleman from 242 Foster, about the hills in the area, particularly the hills of the northeast, you know, towards Winter Street. That's not, that area may lack coverage. It's not the area that Verizon has identified as part of its significant gap and its need to cover as part of this application. So the fact that it doesn't get coverage isn't necessarily a mistake or a fault of this application, it's in part by, by design because of what Verizon is trying to cover. Second, that hill, generally, actually, I'm going to go. So that hill that he's talking about, is this thing in red right here?
Is that the Johnson Street?
No, no, that's the hill he was talking about. Why couldn't this facility be located there instead of Johnson Street? Or instead of, instead of here? It's right behind Bridges Lane and Vestway. It actually moves it significantly closer, it moves to that neighborhood, and would probably make it worse in terms of visual impact. And that area is basically the, owned by, it's conservation land and a landlocked national grid parcel. And then it's very much like the, the area to the northeast carved up into small lots for residential homes. This site is actually, in the area that it's trying to cover, actually at a little bit of a high point. You know, they're obviously recognized, there are hills there and there, but they are further removed and not located proximate to where the coverage objective is. In terms of, you know, other sites, Verizon, it's, Verizon is definitely on 300 Chestnut, it is on Osgood Street, which is the Stevens Estate, and it is on the Boston Hill. And you can actually see those three properties on the, on the coverage plots. So, and the Johnson Street site is well far removed from this facility, and as we talked about before, even the closest commercial area to this site is over, a few miles over in this intersection, I think it's there, if I could be wrong. And it's two lots that are developed and have no opportunity, and so for development for a wireless facility. So as we talked about before, this entire area, when you look at the zoning map, not only just the entire area to be covered, but really the surrounding area generally, is all zone residential. Any facility located in a way to provide coverage to this significant gap is going to be within the residentially-zoned area. It's not feasible to provide it from anywhere else, even the, even this hill, still actually in the residential zone. So in terms of the 600-foot setback, it's always going to be zero. The property that the facility would be located on is going to be in the residential zone. So to meet that, you can't, can't meet that setback, it's going to be zero. So I appreciate people, you know, feel that the homework may not have been done. We've tried to summarize in the chart provided with Mr. Keller's report, you know, the, you know, the summary of why those properties don't work, in terms of, you know, other, there was a question about open space. Open space and conservation land is used restricted for development. So wireless communications facilities or really other types of development at all are generally precluded. So, you know, one of those questions, well, can it go on, you know, open space or recreational space? And typically, those are going to be restricted, and most of those are, those, even those properties are already cataloged by, by Mr. Keller and are use-restricted, so that they would not be available for use.
I have a question. I looked through all the pictures. One of the abutters mentioned walking out her front door, and she was going to see this god-awful thing. I can't find a picture of what this is going to look like from, for example, her front door. I know you have some from each side, but one of the things I'm sitting here thinking about is, you're talking about a generator, and all of the things that go with this, you're going to have, you know, a gravel driveway, which is obviously going to take down some of the trees, because I did see some of the pictures are, you know, street views, for example. But are some of these trees not going to be cut down so that now this woman, for example, goes out her front door and she sees this god-awful-looking thing?
So the, the existing access to the property will be used and then spur off? The area, Steve, the area that's being located is basically cleared already, correct?
She's referring to 31 Bridges. So, I just talked about this with Chris, so.
Sure. Just identify.
Steve McKellher, Director General, Varsity Wireless. So we heard a request to fly in a balloon, and we are open to that request. We'd like to have it done prior to our next planning board hearing. We'll communicate with the planning board staff to reach out to, not everybody, we're not going to do a thousand pictures from, but we're going to need some signed waivers if you want a picture from your front of your house. I'm not going to walk around your whole yard, but I'll do it from the front of your house to the extent that we don't get a response and we feel like there is maybe some concern, we'll take it from the front of your house at the street. But I am welcoming, you know, particularly 31, gentleman at 75, 46, the neighbor at 133, 193, 242, 11, all the way up to 50, Bridges Lane, but people on Vestway, you're not going to see it, so I'm not going to waste my time on Vestway.
And I appreciate focusing more on the people who are talking.
So, from the beginning of Foster to Bridges, I, anyone that responds, I will take a picture from your front steps of your house, I'm not going to go into your house to your bedroom, but, and if you don't recall, if you don't answer, we'll take it from the end of the driveway, and keeping in mind, the top of, the bottom of the balloon is the top of the tower, when you're looking at it. So that's for the 3D modeling that they do, and some people may have, you know, our predictive analysis, we went to the places where the predictive analysis indicated that there was going to be a view at both 115 and 135. So we are more than welcome, to the people that have concerns, to take a picture. If there is a visual impact, we will overlay that on a photo sim, so you can see what it actually looks like, not just the balloon, and some are saying, "Oh my God, I'm seeing a balloon here."
I want to see exactly, you know, you guys are putting a rendering of a tree, I want to see the generator, and I want to see...
So I can show you the generator from the street, but you're not going to see the generator from 31 Bridges Lane a half a mile away.
And that's fine, but I want...
But, so keep it in mind, I don't know if Brian said it, we also did a, proposed a planting plan with the planning board, I don't know if you have it. Can you show it, please, so people from the street? You're not going to see that, so I proposed 30, 40 apervites along the street at one level across from 133, I believe the address is. At another level, 50 feet up, that's 30 feet higher, I propose another level of apervites that wrap around the property line for 160's property line. We have a fence, a woodstock, a fence that everything's going to be, so you're not going to see any of this stuff, even if the trees weren't there, you're just going to see a fence.
How they, how?
Well, the fence is six feet tall, the apervites will grow to 10 to 15 feet tall each row. And so, we, what was that?
I think the fence is higher than six feet.
Well, the fence proposed is six feet, I believe in the drawings, but, but again, the apervites are going to be much higher than the fence anyways.
Who's maintaining the?
Well, we will in conjunction with Mr. Young. I mean, he is, he has expressed a willingness to throw some additional plantings on his own, some pine trees on the slope, which you guys, not you, but everyone else saw, and to do, to further mitigate the visual impact. So that's just, I'm not talking about anyone's, you know, this is just the, right up front. So this doesn't speak to Bridges Lane, or 75, or 46, or 37 Foster, but from the immediate impact, if you just, you want to see a picture of a generator, you're not going to see. I can show you a picture of what we're going to install, but you'll never see it unless you walk up and open a gate. If that makes sense.
If that's what it's going to be, then that's what it's going to be.
Right. And I will try to get also photo simulations from the street, from Foster Street side, looking up from, across the street with the gentleman that just came today, 135, from his driveway to show, to simulate the, the plantings. So you can see what it's going to look like from his driveway with the plantings.
As well as the tower, because you will see the tower.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, no different. So it'll probably have to be two different sims, because you won't be able to get it all in one, but for that particular vantage point.
Because, because we're actually...
Well, because you're going to be looking at the, because the tower's 115 feet tall.
The greenage is gone.
Well, not only that, but the tower's 115 feet tall, I'm 30, 40 feet at the, below the base of the tower at 135, so I'm not going to be able to get an accurate photo sim depicting the compound and the whole stock of the tower.
Right.
So the extent I can, I will, but I just, I've done this before.
How wide is it?
Excuse me.
The circumference, the circumference of the tower itself?
So, general ultimate foundation design, but typically they're, you know, four, five feet at the base, and then they taper up, and, you know, they slip into one another, bolts.
Okay.
So hopefully that, you know, at least gets us in a direction, so people, you know, we did a balloon test, obviously, people weren't notified that we're greater than 300 feet, so the concerns here are, you know, we're hearing them, and we're just trying to address them to the extent we can with the photo sims. And like I said, I'll, Brian, reach out to the planning board member or in conjunction with yours to identify the contact folks, the information for the folks that have concerns. We'll send it, we're going to need authorization allowing us to do it, and if we can get that back, and it can't be verbal, but I'm sure most people that would have no problem with that, limited obviously, just to go to your front step and take a picture.
What is this, what is this showing? Where is the compound? I mean, I see the, the big dotted line box, that's apparently probably showing that there's a detailed plan in there. But where, where's the, the comp, I see the apervites. Where's the compound? The 4,000-square-foot compound?
So it's not a perfect square, so I'm going to try and trace, because there's a little bit of a lag here, but it's basically this area here.
Okay.
And then it goes straight back across. And the, the new plantings that Steve was talking about are that row and then the row down the street.
Does that row go from that? To the left, all the way to the property line.
Is there, is there a clarification? Is there?
One about which trees are to be removed? Because in the section on sheet P2, it lists tree canopy, existing tree canopy to be removed.
You can see the tree detail.
Do you want all the tree trim removed? Yep. Sorry, that's not clear to me. What are you pointing to there?
It's the faint, bubbly, swoopy, cloudy line.
But what is to be removed?
All of them. The trees inside that compound.
So, I'm just, pardon my ignorance here. I understand this to be the delineation of the tree canopy?
Mm-hmm.
This line here? So in terms of an area to be removed, and I see that that line continues up here across the, the compound area in this kind of jagged line, and then it appears to just vanish off the paper over there, so I'm looking, and then I see it again down here depicted. So does that mean all the tree canopy within this area? So it's not clear to me.
So, so the, anything from the road up that's not identified as being stofen up? I can't, I don't know, I can't hear it, but... So all this tree canopy below will remain. Anything up here, all this, up till these trees will get cut back. The two big pines that, you know, are important to keep the visual impact intact, you know, to the extent it is intact, will stay. And then anything to the, I think it's the north, would, would remain. So you're basically looking at anything in this little square, but those trees are remaining. And everything else outside of this, right here, that's all will remain.
What do you mean by cut back? Cut down or cut back?
Well, I mean, there's not a whole lot of height.
Just a clarify.
There's not a whole, you know, in this area, there's, you know, 30, 40 foot, some oaks, the pines that are really, the tall ones are remaining, and, you know, obviously then the slope drops off, and we, there's no need to take out any vegetation that, you know, beyond what we need.
So how many trees total are you talking?
Let me suggest this, Alan, for the, for the next site visit, let's flag all the trees that are going to be removed.
I'll tell you why I do it, but, you know, just kidding, I'll do it.
Thanks.
Not only will you leave, I'll leave.
So I'll, well, so I'll, I got to talk to the others to make sure that the timing works, but.
Steve, are we prepared to identify which, exactly which trees? Because I don't want to get...
No, we have it, we have it all, we have it all, yeah.
But wouldn't there be any tree inside the state compound?
So wrap a neon thing around them. I mean, I'm not saying spend, you know, five hours spray-painting every tree. If it's going to be a bulk of trees...
Right. And I don't want to get the abutter hopes up, we're not going to have 100 people showing up to do a site visit. We've done one, there was probably five to 10 people there. I don't imagine that the landowner is going to be comfortable with...
If the landowner wants a variance and a special permit, I'm sure the landowner can suffer us walking through the property.
Well, you have to take it.
Steve, a site log is a public event?
The public is allowed to attend. Whoever attends, attends.
Okay, that's fine. Hey.
See, I'm willing to be mean to him, too.
We're mean to everybody. We treat everybody equally.
Okay, so I, I think we're going to, does the board have any other questions? Or I think it's time to wrap it up with some kind of direction?
I have a couple questions.
What's that? Oh, 10 seconds.
10 seconds. I just know Manny, who lives next door to this, is, this is a historical area, and I think we omitted to discuss that tonight.
It's not here for us.
Right, but I just want that taken into consideration, because watching this, you describe this, breaks my heart. And I know, living next door to this, I would be appalled. So I just, I needed to say that. Thank you.
I want you to do two things. One, I wanted to respond to one more thing, but I'm actually going to ask one of my consultants to do it. I'll ask them to do it quickly.
It's a response.
A break? Quick recess? Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll be right back.
We've all got it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to continue on. I appreciate the quick recess.
Good question.
Did you?
We were like two and a half hours into the argument.
Let's do one thing at a time. I think that the applicant has something to respond to first, Alan, and then we'll, we'll do something else.
Oh, sure. I'll introduce myself. My name's Mark Corenti. I'm a certified residential appraiser in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, state of New Hampshire as well. Also have a broker's license in the state of New Hampshire. Before you go, yeah?
The only other thing I do want to say, and Mark hasn't had a chance to review the, the study that was submitted, is that Mark's study is site-specific for this particular property as opposed to, for whatever value it has, a scientific study that is not specific to this area, to this proposal, or even to North Andover, Massachusetts for that matter. Go ahead.
Thanks, Brian. I was on the town board myself. I realized the hour. I had a great speech, all lined out, so you're going to get the abbreviated version, and I'm going to keep this under 10 minutes if I can. I'm here to address the, the residential... I'm here to address the residential value component before you. I co-authored the study. And before I tell you what we did and what went into the study, I'm going to tell you what an appraiser doesn't do. And an appraiser does not determine value. An appraiser observes and measures value. So I might have an opinion, you might have an opinion, you might hear opinions this evening about value and how a cell tower is going to impact it. But the opinion that matters, the one that defines whether it matters or not, are the market makers. Market makers are buyers and sellers. Seller might feel that they have something of worth or not, but it's basically going to be a buyer determining on whether or not that feature contributes or not. Now, the question here is, is what's going to happen to the neighborhood if a cell tower comes in? Now, this isn't the first cell tower that's arrived in North Andover. I don't know what you would refer to. I heard a few different names. There's Chestnut, but there's one off of Ridgeway, to the east of Ridgeway and to the west of Johnson Street. It's a very defined cell tower. And we can just visit that neighborhood to identify what has happened to property value since that cell tower has arrived. It's a 35-page report, and again, here is the 30-second version for you. The first one I'm going to mention to you is on Rosemont. And what you can see is 177 Rosemont is on the left where the yellow pin is. And the cell tower is top right. I also drove out there. This is the furthest away and the least visible. You can't see the tower. It's in between the two trees. I did not go onto the property. This is from the road. Rosemont listed for 739. It sold for 739. It sold in 10 days. This is 1,200 feet away from the tower. The next example, there are five, by the way, so there's not an awful lot here. The next one is, excuse me, the last one was 177 Rosemont. This one is 70 Rosemont Drive. You can see it top left. Your 185-foot cell tower is 1,300 feet away. You can see the cell tower right at the top of the street there. That property listed for 689. It sold for 690. It sold in 81 days.
What years?
These years are in the last two years.
Before the cell tower was erected?
After the cell tower has been erected. Cell tower was there first.
So then the presence of the cell tower is already baked into the price, is it not?
That's correct. I'm sorry.
So how could you possibly measure an impact on valuation?
I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct. I am giving you the speed version here. Allow me to back up just for a little bit. These properties, they were compared to a group paired analysis. And what that is, is we compared each one of these properties, in some cases, to 55 other homes similar to them. So what we decided was, and what we showed was, is example. Here is a 3,000-square-foot home that's 10 years old, that's next to a cell tower. Let's compare that now to other 3,000-square-foot homes that are five to 15 years old, that are not near cell towers, and see what the difference in price is. And that's what this report does.
In comparable neighborhoods, is there a...
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Comparable neighborhoods, yes.
Yeah, it's comps, but it's, you know, it's a lot like what we were talking about earlier. There's art and there's science in the model here. So what we have are comparisons. They're comps, yes. But they're like measurably different, because we don't... And I, look, you can't get it. You can't get the before-the-cell-tower-is-erected price and then the after-the-cell-tower-is-erected price. So what we're listening to, and I appreciate the work and the efforts that you've put into this, but we're not listening to a presentation that takes head-on a before-and-after valuation. So somebody who is adjacent to this cell tower, assuming that the cell tower here on Foster is built, we're not getting anything, I don't think, from your report that says their price is not going to be negatively impacted.
But we are, because the people who live on Foster, if their property value is going to go up or down due to the market, if you find a comparable property, regardless of market going up or down, regardless of cell tower, that's going to tell you whether or not the cell tower had an effect, because you can't control the market. So today, their house may be worth $200,000. You put the cell tower up, the market drops. So now their house is only worth $180,000. But that's what the rest of the market is. So it is a fair comparison, even though you're not getting the before-and-after, because it's with the market, regardless of the tower.
Yeah, there's alpha and there's beta. They're two entirely different things.
But it's not, because how do you sell a house? Sorry.
No, no, you hit it spot on. And to be fair, at the planning board, the gentleman that was sitting in your seat had asked a very, very similar question. He had asked, did you compare a property that existed before a cell tower and then compare it again after the cell tower existed? I didn't get an opportunity to address him, because it was 10 o'clock at night. I like to go first sometimes, but the answer to that is, is you're comparing markets. So if I could simplify that, and I'll exaggerate a little bit on that. Before, pre-cell tower, 1975, house sold for X. Cell tower comes in the 80s, house sells again in the 90s.
The market went up.
The market went up. So it would be wrong to say, oh, look, the cell tower arrived, and it increased values. That's not what happened. The market changed. So the way you determine on whether...
That's beta. But what we're looking for is alpha here, I think. We're looking for what's different than how the market has moved.
Right. The variable you're trying to solve for is an external influence. Again, let me simplify. Let's say we're trying to figure out what an in-ground pool contributes towards a property. You have a property that has an in-ground pool that's 3,000 square feet, 10 years old. Then you compare it to other properties that are 3,000 square feet, 10 years old, that don't have pools. If there's a difference between the two, the pool contributed to value. If there is no difference, then the pool didn't. So what we're doing here, insert cell tower pool.
Yeah, but are you looking at 100-year-old homes? Are they historical?
Do you know what, actually, just at this point, can you just address all the questions to the board and then go back and move on? Because, you know what?
I'm not going to click these pieces tonight, probably. So I'll just have to remain unsettled for now. I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's fine. That's fine. I appreciate the questions. It allows me to address things if I had not. Very quickly, just finishing up with these. This is 151 Rosemont, and this is number three out of five. 151 Rosemont, listed 689, sold for 701. Comparable properties were listing for 692 and sold for 683.
And the date?
The date on that, 2015. You can see the cell tower on Rosemont there, just over the chimney of the White House. We're coming a little bit closer. This one is 14 Skyview. You can see the cell tower. It's 185 feet. It's on the left. 14 Skyview, it's the yellow pin on the right. When I took these photos, I tried to have a perspective of both the house and the cell tower. So the brick house is 14 Skyview. The cell tower, you can clearly see on the left. That's 500-foot difference. Skyview sold for 849.9, excuse me, listed for 849.9, sold for 825. This home was of exceptional quality. Home similar to it, we're selling for much less. The last house I want to present to you, 68 Ridgeway. This one's 275 feet from 185-foot tower. And that's your visibility. 68 Ridgeway is the White House. 68 Ridgeway listed for 629.9, sold for 629.9. It is a 2,960-square-foot home. To address your point, other homes, 51 in total, with an average square footage of 2989, or basically 29, within 29 square feet, listed for 640 and sold for 630. So you have a home that is clearly visible to a cell tower that sold for 629.9, competing homes that are similar to it in age, square footage, within 29 square feet, sold for 630. This home sold in 20 days. Now, you might look at these and just say, geez, you know, would you look at the cell tower? But for some buyers, what you might value for features, colors, size, square footage, quality, materials, other buyers look at completely different. As an appraiser, and for the last 20 years, I've been in over 5,000 homes. I've seen sellers do some unique things. I've been inside homes. I have the benefit of being on the front line, holding the purchase and sale in my hand and seeing what people valued. All it takes is one person to say, you know what? That's the home for me. It's the home for my family. And their purchase decision is made by making an offer and closing on it. That home sold, and it sold for no different. Now, again, that might not be some people's cup of tea. But as a property seller, all you need is one person to say, that's the home that I want. And I'm going to give you your list price. So in this particular case, it sold for full price. It sold in 20 days. And in the year prior in North Andover, the average days on market was 65. So it wasn't a detriment to its value. And there's a concern on whether or not the neighborhoods are similar. And I would like to address that. So what I did was... The neighborhood discussion can be subjective. What one person likes in the neighborhood, another person might like different. So I'm going to go back to what I said at the start of the presentation. Let your market makers determine what value is, rather than your own opinion. And for the market makers, I did a one-year radius around 122 Foster. The median sales price was 623,500. That's a three-year analysis of sales within a one-mile radius of 122 Foster. 68 Ridge, which is the White House, a three-year median sales is 619,000. That is a 99.27% comparability. The neighborhoods are, I should say, buyers are looking at the neighborhood as being highly, highly comparable.
Is there a reason why, sorry, is there a reason why majority of the homes you looked at are 2016 that you went outside of the, like, a six-month radius?
It's a good question. I can certainly go much, much further back. I'd like to keep the data...
Why didn't you look more just within the six months versus going out into 20? I mean, we're at the end of 2017 now. But a lot of the comparisons that you talk about are 2016.
Yes. Not every home that has a visibility of a cell tower has sold. So sometimes the data can be a little scarce. I know real estate is not exciting, but you all look like you're half asleep right now.
I actually enjoy that.
You're...
You might be the only one.
I get the same look at home. The dog tunes me out. They all tune me out.
I love it. I'm just suspicious of it, because it's not science. I appreciate that. I appreciate that we can reduce things down to numbers, but there are still a handful of assumptions. And there are a lot of things that we don't know. When we're talking about $20,000 price swings, like, it did have this effect or it didn't have that effect. And it feels like that's roughly the number. The reality is that we don't know what the actual deal was, because what I think you have are what's reported at the Registry of Deeds. And there's a whole lot that goes on in a purchase and sale agreement other than the final purchase price that's recorded at the registry.
Oh, that's not fair.
People negotiate closing costs. People negotiate improvements to the home. There are all sorts of dollars that happen that have nothing to do with the top line.
You can only negotiate, oh, so much behind the...
You can, but those numbers can't be at least $20,000.
It's 1015. I think you guys can argue.
Understood. Understood. I guess I'm suspicious that there is not necessarily science. I'm not buying this with blind and sinker, either, frankly. I don't think, it's just not, to me, it's not quantifiable. I work with enough appraisers myself. You can, I can get an appraiser to move a number, you know, just by talking about the assumptions. All you have to do is challenge the appraiser's assumptions that, you know, are you sure that this was enough?
But sales, you can't...
How can you assume that this lease is not going to roll over? How can you assume that this lease is going to roll over?
I shut up.
All I can tell you is that...
These numbers are untouched. I have not touched these numbers at all.
Absolutely not. I 100% get that you haven't touched the numbers.
So I am presenting to you what a buyer paid for this home. I understand hedonic reasoning. I've done linear regression. The criticism with that is the more you manipulate a number, the further away you get from the truth. So my analysis, no hand involved.
Understood. There are hands that are in the deal before you get to them. That's all.
But that's what the market makers have done. That's the negotiation that they have done.
That's what they've done, and that's what they paid at the Registry of Deeds. But there's more to the deal than what is recorded at the registry.
I want to know the deals on your house.
All right, Paul, we're going to stop, and we're going to continue. We're going to go forward.
If you're negotiating for closing costs, then you're a sucker.
Do you know, we have another meeting on the agenda as well, so, yes, we do. So here's the thing. I'm going to wait for Alan to come back, because he respectfully waited for me.
Are you kicking us away?
Not tonight. Maybe next meeting.
So what we're going to do is probably plan a site visit.
Do not do Saturday morning.
At 8:00?
No, I sleep in until 9:00. I am sorry. I will not show up. I have a 10-month-old at home. You know, I might be one of your backers.
So we're going to plan a site plan that is actually going to be on the website. So when it's getting...
Site visit.
A site visit, thank you. And it's going to be flagged out. The trees are going to be flagged.
Well, open.
We'll get them. We just got to, we can't commit to the date tonight.
Correct. Yeah, we're going to have to, as we did prior, we're going to have to go back and forth.
But I would like to, at least as a conjunction, possibly with the planning board members, if they want to...
We don't care. We don't care. They don't care about us. We don't care about them.
That's not nice. We play nice together.
So what we're going to do also is, I'd like to recommend that we use Isotrop as well for a review. And I know that, I think you've talked to town council, so, oh, okay.
Actually, I didn't remember who she was. She hasn't contacted me at all.
So what we'd like to do is take this to Isotrop for a review on the perspective of a variance, not as opposed to a special permit. So using the same outside peer review that the planning board is using in order to cut costs. And so what we're going to work on is a scope of work. So this is a lot of information for us as a planning board to process.
It's our zoning board.
Zoning board, thank you. Pie in my face. Yeah, thank you. So we're going to work together with you guys and see a scope of work. And it's going to be at your expense. So we're going to get that together, so you can have it out to there. And I know that town officials are going to be working. I thought town council had contacted you regarding this.
Check your spam.
You know what, I got in, I'm sorry. It may have been town council, and I assume, because I, you know what? It didn't come from Valerie. It did come from somebody else. And I just assumed she was someone maybe filling in for Valerie or something.
Susan Egan?
Yes. Okay. I'm sorry.
That is the town council.
She didn't identify, so it's town council.
Okay.
It's fine. So I did get, we did get the email. We talked about it.
Okay.
I guess in terms of the scope of work, I'll work with her on that. Is there one thing we're not...
And myself as well, because I wanted the permission from the board to negotiate that, so we don't have to bring it back in order for time constraints. Because we do want to get something in place as soon as possible, so we continue on. I mean, this is a vast amount of information. I'm an analyst, but not, I don't analyze this kind of stuff. I analyze numbers, so, and I know that we can have that looked at in detail. And I'd like for, I think his name is Michael?
David.
David? David to come to the meeting as well to present. So that would be in the scope as well. So if you can work that out. Is there anything else that the board requests?
I'm just looking at the most recent plans. And I haven't looked for it until tonight. In this stack, is there a plan with wetlands delineated?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I also want to add...
I would have assumed that, but self-confidence, have it confirmed.
I didn't mention this was added today, Chief Stanley's letter as well, which they'll present to you.
Oh, that's in here.
Okay. All of them?
The only one I think that I didn't find, the one...
That you received personally to your personal...
No, I didn't.
Okay. So any, so just for reference, if you guys want to address us as a board, can you please contact Valerie? Because if you send me an email or my personal email, I can't use that. If you send, yeah.
Please don't.
Please don't. So...
Could we get a redo of the RF studies based off of...
Could we get a redo of the RF studies based off of the new height, the adjusted height and the, for the providers?
Not at the side, no. I'd like for them to review what we have in play, which would include all the revised. So you're gonna submit to, I think they have it already, Isotope, all the information as well?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, and that would be revised, what he had requested would be in there as well?
He, the only, the only information he's requested so far has been, has been provided to him.
Okay.
Including the height analysis, so...
But he's gonna look at it differently in a variance. He's gonna look at the structure, the fall zone, the need, the gap, and all the, specifically to variances only, so...
Steve, how should people ask if they want to be on the list of photographs? Should we funnel everybody through the board, or do you want them to come to you?
Sorry, excuse me. Start the representative stuff, and then we're gonna have Brian. Like I said, I'm gonna narrow this film, so if someone wants to grab it, well, I appreciate who they spoke, but they're not gonna have a visual of that, so there's really no reason to send a guy out and take a picture from his first foot. To the extent that, you know, from Boxer Street on Foster to 242 in front of Bridges and then up to the first dozen houses up, Bridges, you know, if they wanna have somebody take a picture from the doorsteps, then they're one of them.
Are they notify you directly or...
Through Valerie.
Through Valerie, okay. Well, you're gonna be a busy Valerie.
Yeah, we can have Brian and Kate, but another thing, there should be a record that the town has.
Okay.
You know, emailing me or Steve directly, I don't think is a good idea.
Can I, sorry, we'll put out a PDF, just a little paragraph saying I, homeowner at X Street, allow representative of the VSC to take a picture from my first step on the X date.
Is that required?
Yes.
Well, yeah, liability.
For insurance purposes.
You know, if someone slips and falls.
Can I ask you a question? Does Blue, does Blue Test, like, if somebody doesn't ask for you to take a picture there, would we know that, what the date of that is, so that someone can take a picture from their own home?
Yeah, you can actually go through Valerie. If you, if, so if you want a picture which is a direct abut from the property taken of your, from your driveway, your front door, whatever, please contact Valerie. Her address is on the website. I think there's a direct link to your email as well, and she'll arrange it for you.
But I'm asking, would we know the date and the time?
Yes, because you're gonna have to sign something.
I'm not gonna take a picture from inside your bedroom, but if I wanna see what it looks like from inside my bedroom, can I look out at 3:00 on Tuesday?
Yep, can you provide that?
Excuse me, the date?
Yes, to, when it's being taken.
Well, it's gonna be coordinated on the website.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to coordinate potentially, but the site doesn't, do that site visit in the morning, Blue Test late, late morning, so everyone just, doesn't take a couple of days to do this.
Okay.
Typically, how long, typically, how long is a BlueNo?
Well, we'll do it for a few hours. We'll do it for at least two to three hours, and the wind's gonna be playing some part, but we'll get it up enough to get all the pictures. I will direct the guy, if I don't hear from anybody, people that don't respond, like I said, from Boxer up through Bridges, if I don't hear from you about your steps, I'll take a picture from your driveway. And so if somebody, if people don't respond, you'll still have pictures on Foster, and at the first dozen houses up, Bridges, and that should be the extent of the picture. Just don't even take anything from the, from the places that we know that are really visible from, not going up to soccer field, that area, it's, you know, it is what it is from that vantage point, but we will do it to the, to the places that I mentioned.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else closer from the board?
Motion to continue. When's the next meeting?
December 12th, which has actually five other applications on it.
Do you guys want to go to J.R.?
That's the job.
Well, depending on what we get from, so our 150 days so happens to be February 9th. So it's the date that you, not, not our first meeting, so it's the date you submitted, submitted the application, which was September 13th, I think you gave me.
No, you do have a Massachusetts controlling date of December 22nd.
What's that?
It's a variance application. It's 100 days from the application under 48.
100? I thought it was 150.
The FCC shot clock is 150. Massachusetts still has its own shorter deadline, which because it is shorter is not preempted and is 100. It is December 22nd.
So you're gonna force us to make a decision in December?
I am not saying that, but we can talk about it in December.
Okay. Beware, we might be a little cranky.
I'm just, and if, if it makes sense to extend...
He just wanted to make sure that we weren't overshooting our, the real deadline, and that's all.
When you were talking about a deadline, I want to be clear that, remind you, you have a second deadline, and it happens to be shorter, and I'm tracking it, as should you.
Love Massachusetts, huh?
We missed that deadline.
So what hap, can you explain the process of missing the deadline? So after the 100-day process...
It would, the application would potentially be deemed constructively approved, and there is a process for going through that. I do not expect this board will miss that date, and as I said, if we are working productively and we need another meeting, we'll extend. If we, if we're ready for a decision, we'll have a decision.
So we want to get this in place as soon as possible. Okay.
Of course, I could always ask for an extension, right?
They can.
They can.
But they're not required to.
Agree to an extension.
I said they can't. I just said they must. They can.
Correct. Okay. Hmm. So next time the voters want to take those things into consideration, they should look closely at it, and they should sit on the land use board.
Motion to continue to December 12th, you said, Valerie? Somebody said December 12th. Motion to continue to December 12th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is your rate the time of 7:30?
Yes, sir.
Oh, boy. We might want to change if...
What's that?
Date and time, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can we change up everything?
We might, we might change it a little earlier, so, I mean, I think we have a right to change it to 7:00, post it a certain time. She'll, Valerie will let you know. We might put you later on the docket then, if that's, if that's an issue? Okay.
So you can both view other, you know, three options.
Correct, and we would do that within the time allotted. Yes, no, no, I wouldn't just say, oh, we're gonna change it that day. We have a certain amount of time to let you know.
A lot of the time should not, but it's...
Oh, we would never, no, we, no, we're very procedurally...
Don't worry, we'll probably leave you the last anyway.
When we know the procedure, we're procedurally aware.
Be quiet. So she'll get, Suzanne will get this to you as soon as possible.
I envy you. Yes, yes. I braced myself with email, box, and Caesar. Just had to let you know, too. Thank you. All right. You guys, we actually still have, just, just for reference, we still have a public meeting in play? Excuse me? We still have another meeting. I'm sorry.
I gotta defer to the, I gotta defer to the chair, and we're gonna move on, sir.
We have to move on, sir.
We can do that later.
So we're gonna continue on. We have one more legal notice here, and Alan, it's a big one, sorry.
All right, let me have it.
But there's a big issue with this, so...
If I can have everybody's undivided attention, please? Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on October 10th, 2017, at 7:30 to all parties interested in the petition for Jeffco, Inc., the property located at 197 High Street, map 066, parcel 44, North Andover, Mass., 01845, in the R4 zoning district. The applicant is requesting two special permits and two variances. A special permit is requested pursuant to Section 9 of the zoning bylaws to confirm that the property is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with 82.33 feet of street frontage, where 100 feet is now required. In addition, a special permit is requested pursuant to Section 4.122, Point 14, Point B, and Section 4.122, Point 14, Point D of the zoning bylaw for conversion of an existing one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling in the Residence 4 district. A connection with such conversion to a two-family dwelling, a variance is requested from Section 4.122, Point 14, Point B, Point B, to raise an existing structure and rebuild a new structure with the gross floor area of the new structure exceeds 150% of the gross floor area of the original building. It is more than 1,000 square feet larger than the original building and where the second dwelling unit exceeds 1,500 square feet. The gross floor area of the new structure allowed 2,761.5 square feet. Requested 4,532.8 square feet for variance of 1,771.3 square feet. GFA of second dwelling unit allowing 1,500 square feet, requested 2264 for variance of 766.4 square feet. In addition, a variance is requested from Section 4.122, Point 14, Point B, Point E for a garage that faces the street and which is not at least 10 feet behind the facade of the principal structure. Garage setback from front facade allowed 10 feet, requested zero feet for variance of 10 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located on 120 Main Street, North Andover, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 to 5:30, and Friday from 8:00 to 11:30.
Okay, so...
Anybody want me to repeat it?
No, that's good. So what you guys don't have in your packet is, because I came a little bit earlier, so is a demolition delay from, that I received from the building inspector.
I don't have that?
So, no, you don't have it. I, because I, did he print out every?
That one that's gone, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
So he failed to give it to Valerie to submit to the, to us as a board. So you have a demo delay, you have a demolition delay on this, so I don't know exactly why you're here having this?
So Dawn called me and spoke to me about this, and I guess the short answer, the reason we're here is because we're seeking the approval for what we want to construct. Obviously, because of the fact that they identified that the building is over 100 years old, we would need to comply with the demolition delay bylaw before we could proceed with construction. But in terms of sequencing of any permits, even if we were issued our variance and our approval, before you can pull a building permit, you need to pull a demolition permit, which is the authorization to raise the old building, and raise the old building before you get your, your building permit.
So is that, this application is solely based on raising the building? So part of this is you have to have it, I mean, I need something from the historical commission saying that that's not deemed a significant building before you raise it.
Yeah, and applications being made with the, with the historical commission. They've been contacted, and I think, did you say December 11?
December 11th, we're on the agenda.
So they're on the agenda.
We found this out yesterday.
I just found out at 6:30, so at least you had a little more notice than me, so. So I, I'm just saying, before anything goes forward, I think it'd be very important to hear from the historical committee because, again, your application is based on that building being raised. But the historical committee might determine that you can't raise it, so I don't know. I don't know what their determination will be.
Well, right, and if the historic...
And you have a delay, too.
How long is the delay?
The delay could be 30, it depends. No, it's, it's...
Up to a year.
So we're making application to them. If they deem that it's not of historical significance, they can waive the delay, and we can have approval to have it raised within 30 days potentially, if it's waived. If it's not waived and were deemed to be of historical significance, it would be a year and a day delay, I believe.
It's, yes, somewhat.
Right. But the, the permits and approvals with respect to building and constructing are entirely separate and apart from, from raising, and there's absolutely no reason why we cannot proceed to seek approval for what we want to build, because in fact, we won't even apply for a demolition permit unless we have approval for what we seek to construct. We won't raise the existing structures unless we have approval to put something else on the lot.
So if the historical committee tells me you have to keep that, then what we had just done at this meeting would be...
We wouldn't have, if the historical...
So what I would like as a board, I'd like an opinion from the historical committee before I proceed forward with any evidence or anything that, that would pertain to this application. I don't know about anyone else on the board, and I, and I hate to push this out to December 12th, because it's probably gonna be on the end again, so. I don't know about anyone else's request. Okay, I know it's 10:35, and it's easy to say yes, December 12th, but...
I would love to hear the evidence, to be honest, but I don't, I mean, he doesn't have a bill, if, if you forget about the, the raising issue, I mean, that's kind of part of the permitting process where, I mean, they come here first and then they get permitted.
Well, in this case, it would be the historical and then...
But regardless of... This is in connection with seeking for a permit for what we're seeking to build. The historical commission is in connection for a permit to raise, and that's within the, the building inspector's responsibility. He's not allowed to issue us a building permit, excuse me, a demolition permit to raise the structure, which means we can't do anything until he issues a demolition permit, which would only be after historic commission...
But it might be a year. They might deem, yeah.
But how good are our proposals?
The decision of this board is...
Two years?
Two years. More than here, so it would...
Okay.
Effectively...
So I'm fine with hearing instead of debating it.
So the risk, it sounds like the risk is the applicant's. You're dissolving with him.
And possibly we waste 20 minutes of our lives.
Think this is 20 minutes?
Twenty, I think this is a little more than 20 minutes. There's a lot asked. Can you do it in 20? Because we have to stop at 11.
So why not just use the 20 minutes?
So you got 20 minutes. That's all we can give you.
Or we continue.
Not that we're saying you have to, it's by law, we have to stop.
And I understand, but, but even, even at 20 minutes, I think, you know, for, for my clients...
It's union law, we can't, it is what it is.
But my client, we just, you know, we just sat and we're in the hallway for a number of hours. I think it would be productive for us to hear maybe what the board has to say if we didn't get to a point where you're making the decision. Okay.
Go.
All right. Sorry. So, I mean, I guess... The relief we're looking for is a special permit to convert from a single family to a two-family. The variances, as suggested, were related to the size of the structure. Because it's a conversion, under the bylaw, it's limited to the lesser of 150% of the existing footprint or no more than 1,000 square feet from what's on the lot presently. By way of overview, I think the pictures that my client has and that we're showing to you, on the left side is the exact structure that we're looking to build. That is, I believe, 252... 252 Sutton Street?
Yes.
Okay, so on the left, it's 252 Sutton Street. It's the exact same plan here. It exists on the ground. The same builders built it there. That's what we're looking to put on the lot. On the right is what's presently there now, the arguably building of potential historical significance. So...
Is it vacant?
Right now, it's vacant. The owner, it's under agreement with my client. My client is buying it pending the ability to get permits. The owner is also here. She had it on the market during the peak of the market from May for three months. People came through, everyone looked at it. What's on the lot now is in a state of disrepair that requires substantial improvement. And she didn't get a single offer until my client made an offer pending the ability to raise and rebuild.
So is it close to Mount Louisville? Is that how bad?
Yes. Is it close to what?
Not.
Okay, I heard.
It's close. It has... So... Someone is... Okay, so apparently, it's been recently rented on a month-to-month basis while someone's looking for some housing. The owner is Dawn. She was living there and she's moved out.
So it has running water and heat?
It has running water and heat, only on the first floor. It's no heat on the second floor. Had a number of contractors come in and give quotes for remodeling what was in place, and it was cost prohibitive. Apparently, the barn in particular would require substantial structural improvement, so...
I was by the... the other day, there's a dog out front. So somebody's living there.
I understand that...
A month, month.
Who?
Someone just moved in on a month-to-month basis while they're looking for other housing.
Well, my tenants move in on a month-to-month basis, too. Okay, they stay there for years.
Yeah, I guess one of the... One of the things, just in terms of the amount of relief that we're looking for and based on the square footage, there's a discrepancy between what the building inspector calculated as the existing gross square footage and what we believe is the existing gross square footage. The plan that we submitted included a table of... dimensional table which identified the existing square footage as 2,430 square feet. When the building inspector first received the application, our engineer had not provided that table on the original plan. Dawn, I think, calculated the existing square footage off of the zoning card and what was shown there, which did not, in fact, I believe, include the barn area, which probably should have been included in the square footage. I believe that's the reason for the discrepancy between what Dawn had calculated as the existing square footage of 1,841 square feet versus what we believe to be the actual square footage.
I don't think that's true. So I'd like clarification from him because when I spoke with them today, that was not what I got from him. But he's not here to say either way, so...
Okay. The...
So what you're... Well, we have to go what you're presenting to us. So you're presenting to us existing of 2,430 and you want it...
Yeah, we applied based on Dawn's calculations, which is the worst-case scenario of the... 4,532 is what he calculated as the square footage and the 2,761 as what is allowed.
So what's that? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're saying. So which one should... Are we going... What are you asking for? Are you asking for what's on here? Are we looking at the building inspector? Inspector of buildings, I'm sorry.
I'm asking for what is both on the application, which is what Dawn also calculated.
So is it discrepancy?
I was just pointing out that our engineer calculated the existing gross square footage to be 2,430 square feet, whereas the building inspector had calculated at 1,841 square feet. Based on the 1,841 square feet that the building inspector calculated, he suggested we had an allowed square footage of 2,761.5 square feet. That's what we based our variance request off of. I was simply pointing out that if, in fact, our engineer's calculation as to the existing square footage of 2,430 were correct, that then we would be able to expand up to 3,430 square feet without seeking a variance. So perhaps the extent of the variance that we were seeking were not as significant as it appears to be.
So according to what you want on here, what's the percent that you're requesting?
We are requesting... We're pressing 4,532 square feet, where 2,761 is allowed for a variance of 1,771.
And what's the percentage?
What's that?
What's the percentage that you... My phone's over there. So you're requesting a 40% relief in variance of square feet?
Yes.
Okay, plus or minus. Okay. Tick tock? I think also the garage is an issue as well. According to the bylaw, you needed to have the on the side.
Yeah, the bylaw would require that the garage be 10 feet setback from the front facade of the building. So I... You know, we're requesting a variance that it would be at the front facade as opposed to 10 feet setback. I think that, you know, with the design that's being proposed, the difficulty would be to set it back from the front of the facade. It would have to be garage on the side or to the rear of the building, I believe, in order to be able to access it. It would probably need to be in the rear of the building. I think, we just think that it would... It's probably a better design and...
Have you explored other designs? That you don't have to have that relief? Just because a design, it looks better for variance? That's not... I mean, is there a reason why? Is it because something, is it funky on the side? I mean, is it...
I'll give you the answer to that. It's because of setbacks. They have to go for variance on the side with the garages out to the right.
You could always make the house smaller.
Yeah, the house is pretty small. It is, it's only 20 by 28 deep anyway, so you really can't get much...
Yeah, I'm sorry, you just... It's getting late. You have to come up and state your name now just for the record.
I'm David Hearn from Jeffco. So we did explore other ways, but this one makes the most sense because the garages are right in. We need two spaces at each... for each unit.
Because what was... What?
That's part of the bylaw, so...
Right.
In order to give people a garage, it's impossible really to put them anywhere else.
You can't put them on the side?
We could attach them, but then we'd be going for variance for setbacks because we don't have the frontage to put them on the sides. We could put them on the sides and put them back, but then we'd be going for variance for setbacks as opposed to the variance for having it in the front. It actually makes a little better house if they were on the side. But it would come into the setback on the sides.
He is putting it in the...
No, on the side. Go under on the side. Instead of having a garage out, you talk about...
Oh, you mean when you pull in like this? No, it doesn't set up for that because the house would have to be much bigger.
I don't think you'd have a turning radius to get in from the side.
You probably wouldn't have the turning radius either, but it would have to be 16 feet deep, so that's bigger than the house is, you know?
So you can also make the house a little smaller. Would that work? If you took 5 feet from each side, would that still give you... I just want to know why.
Well, I think one of, you know, one of the issues that shouldn't be overlooked here is we're dealing with a property. If you look at the existing condition, I mean, we have... I mean, almost the entire structure taking up probably more footprint than this is almost entirely within a side setback. We have almost a zero setback on the left side of this lot. So we're, by doing this, we're eliminating substantial non-conformities on this lot. In addition, the structure itself, though we're talking about it being large, is, would be entirely conforming but for the fact that we're looking for the two-family special permit because it's the two-family special permit which limits the ability to expand on a percentage basis over what exists. I mean, this exact house, if we were to knock down the middle wall and call it a one-family rather than a two-family, wouldn't require any variances and could be constructed but for, of course, getting the...
But you want two-family.
But we want the two-family admitted and...
What's the size of each unit? Square footage?
So the... Hold on one second. The total square footage is roughly...
Not, well, not total of both, just one.
So you just divide by two.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. I think it's like 4,500 square feet roughly total, so...
So 20 roughly, 22.
22?
22, yeah.
It's not necessarily small.
No.
I mean, I lived in an apartment that was like 750 square feet.
But I'm gonna go back to something I mentioned earlier about the property as it exists, having been on the market during the peak of the market and not getting a single offer at a very low price.
Because there was a cell tower there?
The only... Actually, we were thinking of just putting a cell tower on this lot.
Make it look like a tree.
I can't help it, come on.
No, but legitimately, the reason it needs to be a two-family is because it needs...
Just a question, what was it listed for?
What's that?
What was it listed for?
You don't...
Dawn, what was it listed for?
Initially, initially 320 and then went down to 310 and then down to 300. So we called back people that had been interested. Even if I were to take 290, mathematically, it didn't work out.
So how many two-families are on the street?
Many. Many.
You know I like my little...
I was gonna say, where's the board?
I like my board, I like my Dawn board.
Seven minutes left and I have some people that have been here for several hours, so I want to give at least one or two of them a chance to say something.
I think the chair would be in the position to determine who's gonna speak.
No, thank you.
That's my recommendation to the board.
Okay, so we do have, actually, we still have to finish up some other business, too, as well. So we have to allow ourselves five minutes at the end. So we have, I'm sorry, I apologize, because it's union rules.
Yep.
We have to close at 11:00. We have three minutes. So I do have to cut you short, but really quickly, at suggestion of the board that we'd like to hear from people here because you did graciously sit and wait. So before you go, you need to speak with Dawn about the square footage. Finish that off.
Two-family board.
Possibly look at other designs. Two-family board. If you could put a single family there without having to get variances and special permits, I don't know why you're not doing that. So if you can touch on that. Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is David Laporte. I'm at 58 Brightwood Avenue and I'm a director of butter. And my property is... I'm on Brightwood and they're right on High Street, so it's directly behind me. So I'm gonna try and do this in under two minutes. All right. So as I said, my name is David Laporte, my wife Sharon, and I have owned the house directly behind 197 High Street for what will be 22 years in February, '22. We are extremely opposed to the granting of the request of variances for several reasons. First, we are concerned about the drop in property value that the building of a two-family dwelling would have on our home. Secondly, we are concerned about the increase in population and level of noise should this property change from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. We have an in-ground pool in our backyard and enjoy hosting friends and family, not only for barbecues and use of the pool, but more often for enjoying quiet dinners with friends sitting peacefully by the pool. We enjoy the use of our backyard for more than half of the year. Every year. Changing this property from a one-family to a two-family dwelling could potentially double the number of people and the amount of activity taking place only a few feet from where our outdoor furniture is located, making a huge impact in the level of noise for us to endure while trying to enjoy a peaceful outdoor meal or while reading a book in the hammock, for example. Lastly, more importantly, we are extremely concerned about the negative impact this building would have on our current view. Our living room is currently... Our living room is located at the back of our home, the only window in the room that faces the rear of 197 High Street. I've got photos, but I don't know if we have time for photos. But I'm gonna keep on moving on. Currently, our view consists of the back of a rustic New England-style barn, which I believe is pictured right there. We can see that. That's what we see. The actual house... Excuse me?
Just, I'm sorry.
The actual house is only partially visible as the barn blocks the majority of the current structure. According to this requested variance, the new structure would exceed the current one by more than 150%. 150%.
Height?
Excuse me?
In height, please.
No, I believe that would exceed the current width of the house, 150%. And to make matters worse, a second variance is also being requested for the building of a garage, a structure that the current lot does not have. In granting these variances, you would be severely impacting the view we have enjoyed for almost 22 years. We spend the most time in our living room, and should this proposal go through, our entire view from that room would be made up entirely of the back of a two-family house and garage. It would change our current country-setting view of that, country-setting view into that of a city view with nothing but buildings to look at. As I said, I have photos of our living room showing that we only have one window as well as what our current view from what the window looks like. So you can see with your eyes what we see with ours. This property was sold as a one-family home because that is what it is zoned for. Given the size of the lot, the buyer was fully aware of this when the purchase was made. As neighbors and abutters, we should not have to endure such altering of our property value, level of noise, and most importantly, our daily view. In making a final decision, we respectfully ask for you to consider how you would feel if this was being done to you in the home you enjoy. Would you want someone to be able to come in and alter your environment to the level that this proposal would alter ours? We are reasonable people and we are in no way opposed to the tearing down of the current structure and the rebuilding of a new, single-family home minus the garage. That is, after...
I'm sorry, I have to wrap this up. We do have three minutes left and we do still have other business.
Okay, thank you for your time and consideration.
I apologize again, I'm sorry. Just, and can you give us a side, a height review as well? A height?
Sure.
So we have to leave. We have to leave at 11 o'clock. Unfortunately, I'm sorry. Yeah, so will you sign a waiver? We have to continue this. So if you sign a waiver, that would be to January, that would be, so...
December.
Oh, I thought I slipped that one.
Well, you gotta tell the rest of us.
Motion to continue to December 12th, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All right, and continue on here. We have three letters from Chapper if you want to review that, and I'll have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor? Look at that, I had a minute for you, Valerie.